Okay, it's time for meeting order. Alright, so getting started, we're gonna do a roll call. I have Rick Alexander, Jeff Hans, Kate Limpier, Casey Lakey, Kate Murphy, Ronnie Kerlof, Lisa Conders, Adrian Lamb, Parker and Wonderley. And looking for the agenda. People are going to need to not talk because our recording secretary can't hear. Looking for approval.
A move to approve.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to make motion.
Katie Makefield, Casey Seidman. Is everybody ready?
Ready.
Okay. Okay, alright, so the agenda has been, no it hasn't, I'm sorry, so there was a, a second all in favor?
Hi.
Sorry?
Online.
He's here, that's Scott, so Scott Pendles on now.
Thank you.
So the approval of the agenda has moved. Next agenda item is public comments. This will be the first round. Since there's a lot of people here that Amber is not, doesn't know your name, just make sure you state your name and what time your comment here can speak.
Sean Cogan, if everyone could speak up, it's gonna be, if everyone will share.
Is there anyone on line, Scott, bring hand up for a public comment? Alright, we're gonna move on to old business, fiscal year 25 budget.
Alright, so as everybody knows, we had a failed budget on April 23rd. In March, when the budget went forwards, and while we were also doing a normal voting day, presidential primaries, we had over 1,200 people show up. And that initial vote failed by 79 votes, 47% saying yes and 53% saying no. In our next run of the budget on April 23rd, we had a total of 560 people, almost half showed up, 340 voting no, 220 voting yes, a significantly wider margin than we had seen the first round. So as we discuss what our recommendations are, as we move forward, we've got a number of things to consider. And among those are concerns about as we begin to look at making additional cuts, that we have to worry that if we cut things that for some people are vitally important, they may hurt them. And then if we don't cut things for people who need to see the number come down, they will continue to hurt them. Our other concerns, as we talked about it, are that if we don't have a passed budget on July 1st, we can borrow up to 87% of the current year's budget in order to be able to move forwards. While we continue to put forwards, and at the moment, according to statute, if you don't have a passed budget, you have to continue to put forwards a proposal for a budget until one passes. There are a variety of things floating around in terms of proposals to change that. There is, and board members received a copy of this earlier, there is a bill that has been proposed that would make it possible for school districts after three failed votes to say that they just aren't going to try anymore. And then they go to not the 87% of this year's budget, but to a rather complicated formula for the default budget, which for the Green Mountain School District would be removing an additional $3 million from the budget that we are about to put forwards to. And it is my opinion that that is a catastrophic level of cuts to our system and is something that we should be looking to avoid. So we have a number of proposals that we are going to put forwards. Our principals are involved with all of them, they agree with some of them, they disagree with me about others. And they are certainly going to have the opportunity to tell the board why they think that what I'm proposing is something that you should say no to. You get to make those choices. We discussed, just so everybody knows, in our discussions with the principals, we have, last week, we also had your next superintendent was part of a discussion, not with the principals, but prior to that, where we discussed all of these, he is going to try to, was going to try to be here in person, I don't believe that's gonna work. He is going to try to join us online, not because he is trying to take this over, but because he's the one who is going to be implementing this budget. So we're working very hard to make sure that he is involved in this. And anything that he feels strongly about one way or the other is part of what our, the discussions are that we are having. We're going to put in front of you a couple of things. We're gonna talk to you first a little bit about the TRSU budget that we will be going over on Thursday, because the reductions we're proposing there are part of a reduction for this district in terms of the assessment. And we are also then going to talk about what we're proposing for the next vote, and also let you know that if this vote does not pass, what we think will be on the agenda to remove for an upcoming. So I would also tell everybody that there are, there are multiple districts that are facing the same thing. There are many that have already had a second, and I think in one instance, a third budget already failed. Our neighboring district of Springfield had their second budget went down, and they have just gone through to approve putting forward exactly the same budget with a statement to everybody that if it doesn't pass, they will be cutting transportation, athletics, after-school programs, and a wide variety of things. So we're going to be giving you a similar, this is what we are proposing. It becomes the board's decision what to do with it, and also letting you know what we think is likely to disappear if we fail this time. I'm sorry, you should be.
That's okay.
You mentioned the default budget and a $3 million reduction. Can you tell us how you arrived at the $3 million?
So this is the formula in, if you can hear me.
Yes.
What it is, is the yield times our long-term weighted membership.
Yes.
And then in stating that, you can't hear. So it's the yield, yeah, so I will repeat it.
Thank you.
It is the yield times our long-term weighted membership. Plus the money from the tax center. That's how you determine. Because that represents $1 tax rate? Right, so this, you will hear people, if you're listening to conversations about this, you'll hear people talking about, do we have to keep putting a budget forward if we are at that dollar rate? And this bill proposes that if you have reduced things down to the point of it being, the base tax rate being a dollar, then no, you don't. Because why would you? It is already at a point where you are, where anybody doing this is going to be drastically lower than what their current functioning budgets are.
Are you talking about the proposal in the bill?
Yeah.
Or what's standing now?
Well, that's not.
So, so what you're talking about now is different than the.
Right, so what, what is, that's the proposal in this bill. What is, what is happening right now, the law as it stands, is that we have to keep putting forward a budget proposal until one passes. It doesn't matter how many times that takes, and it doesn't matter how low it goes. You have to put it forwards until one passes. And on July 1st, we are allowed to start borrowing money to, to no more than 87% of the current year's budget. Which, reminding everybody, given that we have raises built into our bargaining unit contracts, that we have an increase of 16.4% in health insurance benefits, that is, we're going to talk about our, we now know that our dental benefits that we budgeted at 3% are coming in at an 8.5% increase. So that if we maintain our current budget at 100% of our current budget, we would have insufficient funds to, to level fund because of those increases in salaries and benefits. We certainly don't have enough at 87% of our current budget to, to do things without making significant reductions. Alright. Still have people coming up. So I am going to. I'm sorry, Scott is sending a.
I told her I'll watch on my own.
And, and we can, we can take care of that. Alright. So. Why is that not on? So I'm going to share on the screen our. You want to start with TRSU or with green?
You guys.
TRSU, we'll start with TRSU. Sorry, trying to manage too many different screens.
Okay.
Yes. Alright. So the proposal for the TRSU reductions that we're going to be putting in front of the board, the TRSU board on Thursday, which means they may accept these and they may reject them, and that our board members have a copy, which says at the top of it, May 2nd, if a second date happened. Our revised budget for the TRSU is $10,707,666. That is an 11.68 increase over this current year. This includes bringing technology and all of the technology expenses that were previously housed in the two districts, bringing them into the TRSU so that we can handle our vendor payments more appropriately. So you can see that on the second line in this second big paragraph here, where you will see there is zero in the technology budget up until this year. Not because we never spent any money on technology, but that amount of money was separated out into the Ludlow budget and Ludlow Mount Holly budget and the Green Mountain budget. It makes more sense to have it here, but we want you to see that this is not $486,000 of new TRSU spending. This is just funding that's been put into this budget. Our, our other expenses, our, our four main categories, our technology, central office, transportation, special education. By statute, all transportation costs for either of the two school districts and all special education costs for our districts have to be housed in the TRSU budget. So we hear people tell us that the TRSU budget is something that nobody votes on and they don't have any control over. The TRSU budget is assessed to the two districts. When you vote on your district budget, you are voting on the TRSU budget. It is, all of these things are present in your district budget. So, and it is, when budgets aren't approved, the TRSU budget isn't approved. The primaries, you can, the, the primary driver of all of our increases in spending comes from our special education department for the TRSU and also salaries and benefits for employees. So I've also listened to some people recently talk about how we need to cut out all the fat at central office. Your central office staff consists of your superintendent, your business manager, your technology director, your curriculum director, your special education director, the, the administrative assistant for the, the special education director, the administrative assistant for the superintendent, your HR department, which is a single person, your payroll person, and your accounts receivable person. In addition to that, we have somebody who handles additional assistance for the phone and special education funding and is a Medicaid clerk. And we have a, a person in special education who helps with, whose full-time job is to handle out-of-district placements, but she is a special education employee and therefore is housed in central office, and your after-school program director. I'll be happy to hear from you which one of those jobs you think is unnecessary. They, they are, are, in my opinion, obviously, all requirements. The business office used to have, prior to Cheryl taking over, used to have five people in it. Cheryl was the assistant business manager. When the business manager left and she became business manager, we did not replace the assistant. So those, those are, those are the positions, and if we budgeted them by saying that 70% of the salary of your technology director is going to be paid by Green Mountain and 30% by Ludlow Mount Holly, it would not look to you as though this was some mystery central office person. It would be your technology director, because it is you. In the same way that the superintendent is not the TRSU superintendent, even though that's how it sounds. The superintendent is the Green Mountain Unified School District Superintendent and the Ludlow Mount Holly Unified Union School District Superintendent. So if we look at, we have reduced this in, the increase significantly from where we started, but it is still an increase. And again, the main reason for those increases, if you look at the difference column on this chart, that we have an increase of $129,000 over last year in central office. That is almost exclusively due to salary and benefit changes. The transportation, we have a decrease of $150,000 because we're not running the buses as often and we were not, we also finished paying off bus loans, which removed it.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
When you're saying the difference, you're saying the difference between.
Last year.
And this current proposal?
Yeah.
But this current proposal or this year?
We're talking about the difference between the current budget and the proposed budget. I'm sorry, I started talking about this year or last year.
The proposed budget, meaning the one that just failed?
Nope, the one you're doing tonight.
Thank you.
What is the total number of central office employees?
14. Other than our, we are moving our technology employees who had been housed in the districts, our tech support people, where we had three of them who were housed in the districts are now being housed at TRSU. So those salaries are also included here, rather than being included in the separate districts where they were, so that's 70. But those, the tech support, our two of our tech support people are, are primarily serving the, the buildings. They're not doing their work from central office, going out, they're actually in our buildings. Alright, so, what's up there? Special education, we have a special education increase of $513,899 over last year. And those increases happen because of the change in the needs of students, because costs go up, because we have some students who go out and other students who come in. And while there are things within the special education budget that we do control, so you hear a lot, we can't do anything about it. There are things in the special education budget that we make decisions about. There are other things that we have no control over. One of the things that we control is we made a proposal for an assistant to the special education director, and we are proposing that we do not fill that for next year. And I will explain to the people who support it, I'm one who supports it, you need this. However, we cannot fill it now until the budget passes. The budget will not pass until the end of May or beginning of June. That is the absolute wrong time to try to fill this kind of high-pressure, high-need position. It is a position that we really need to fill, and I want you all to be able to advertise for it and fill it in March, not in June. So at this point, I don't see the value, and again, you'll decide how you feel about it. I don't see the value in holding on to having that money in the budget when I have very real concerns about our ability to fill the position with the kind of person we want in the position at this length. So that is a removal of $128,341. Anyway, let me go down through this, I bounce around. So going through central office, we're reducing the central office part of this budget by $11,827. We have in the budget for a grant writer, who we sometimes farm our grants out to, and we will take care of all of that internally. So rather than having the $7,500 to go to someone as a part-time gig, and we've been doing that already this year. When we have a grant that needs to be written, we can handle that ourselves. So we have taken that out, it's a small amount. We're also proposing pulling back out the $7,000 for the ClearGov program that we just put in, because while it does a great many things, we've had a lovely demonstration of how well it doesn't function when your budget fails. Because putting all of the information into the system is a fair amount of time and effort. I say not overwhelming because I'm not the one doing it, Cheryl is the one doing it. And having to do it once is a challenge. Getting onto your third time of trying to do it makes it not, not good bang for our buck. So that is something that we would propose taking back out. We also have, and when we go through, we look at budgets carefully, rather than it being a snapshot in time, we have some adjustments and take things back up as well as taking them down. So we looked at how much we spent on utilities and how much we spent so far this year and figured we could reduce about $400 and not fill that bench. But we also discovered that our people handling our language learners are having to travel more, and we need to increase our mileage budget by about $400. So that's just a wash, but we also, as I said before, we budgeted a 3% increase for dental benefits that most of our staff get, and the dental insurance has come in at an 8.5% increase. So that's an additional $3,000 that has to go back into. We're not doing any changes to transportation at this time. I will be telling you that if it turns out that this budget fails again, I would be suggesting that you might want to consider not offering transportation. Because, and we'll talk about what, what that would amount to if we, if we remove. However, at this point, transportation is where it is, we are delighted that we now have, what do we have, five drivers instead of the two and a half we were working with for a while? So although on the Ludlow Mount Holly side of things, they do not have a, a driver for Mount Holly still, and the driver in Ludlow is, has, has had some availability issues. In special education, we're reducing the overall special education budget by $169,000 to $25,000. The first type is the assistant director to special education, that's $128,341. We have some students moving around, so we can cut our tuition payments for outplacement by $28,000. We are making a change for one of our special education teachers who is currently at Green Mountain. And we have a .5 reading interventionist who is funded through a grant, who is not coming back. And we have a special educator with a background in reading support. So we floated the idea of combining those so that we would reduce the special education direct staff at Green Mountain to four and a half teachers, although a lot of what the service being provided is the reading intervention. And therefore, we're funding that same full-time FTE person with. And so the salary is the same, but we will be funding half of the salary through a grant rather than through the general fund. So that reduces, because it's a special educator, even though this is a placement at Green Mountain, it reduces the overall TRSU special education budget by the, by the .5 cost of that grant, which is $36,630. We then have some increases, one is the excess cost for our out-of-district students. Those things change, when they change, we have to pay them. And then we have some additional increases because we now know who a couple of new hires are going to be. And when we know the new hire, rather than we have a placeholder, when we know we're going to hire somebody, we take a general middle-of-the-road column salary position and also assume that they're going to do a two-person benefit rather than either a single or a family. Once we know the person, sometimes that means that we can reduce what we put in place and sometimes it goes up. So we have a increase for a couple of our new hires as a result of who they really are rather than our pretend placeholder person. We'd also proposed purchasing a new van for our special education students who we transport. The van that we currently have, while still operating, is getting older and will be getting to its point of no return. It's always better to sell that while it still has some value and bring a new one in. However, we're at the point of trying to reduce everything we can. And we think we can manage with the van that we have for another year. And next year, you can look at replacing it, that's a savings of $35,000. And again, for all of our TRSU employees who get dental benefits, we have to increase that by $6,897 because we budgeted for a 3% increase and it's an 8.5% increase.
Just real quick.
Yep.
If the van doesn't make it through the year, we then have to pay someone else for that transportation, right? And, and I thought it was such that in about four years' time, the van would pay for itself, is that close to?
Yep.
Okay, so it could be an unexpected increase expense that absolutely.
And, and as I'll say with all of these things, we gave you, from the administrative side, we gave you the budget that we think was a good budget on March 5th. Every cut we talk about is not something anybody wants to cut. These are all things that we think are unfortunate choices, that we wish that we were not putting in front of you, and that they are designed to be the lesser of multiple evils. And we're looking at a, if the budget fails, then it doesn't matter. If we continue to say we want these things, we will not be able to afford them. And, and I don't, don't want to get too dire about everything, but then 87% of our current budget will be out of money by February or the beginning of March. Unless we make changes. That's the TRSU budget, there are other things we can talk about with that if people want to bring it up. And then we can go to what we're really talking about here, which is the Green Mountain.
Thanks, I have some questions about that. My math is not mapping, so on this paper, it says a reduction in the TRSU assessment of 123,303, but you just rattled off, I can't do the math, 169, 36, 35, 7,000? What is the actual number? I was just writing down the numbers you were saying.
Actually, looks like it lists reduced by 169 to 25.
Where do you see that?
Right under where it says special education.
Looking down my section.
I think you're looking at Green Mountain, you want to look at.
I was just looking at the reduction in TRSU assessment.
Yeah, because we're telling you the whole TRSU. Yeah, because we're telling you the whole TRSU. Part of, part of it goes to Green Mountain, part of it goes to Ludlow.
Right underneath. Hundred and eighty-one thousand, fifty-two dollars. Reduction.
So if I'm, if I'm, if I'm hearing you right, Kate, when you're looking at what it says on the Green Mountain side for the reduction in the TRSU assessment, that is the reduction that Green Mountain gets from the TRSU assessment. Part of our total reduction of a hundred and eighty-one thousand and fifty-two dollars. Part goes to Green Mountain, part goes to Ludlow.
Yeah, I just didn't have a sheet.
Yep.
So what percentage reduction is the budget that you're proposing to the TRSU? What percentage is it going, two percent, three percent, nine percent?
Over, over what?
Over the last proposed one.
Over the one that we took forward on April twenty-third. It's, it, it, over, well, I, I, I don't know that we got that instantly available. We did, we, it is overall a four percent decrease from where we were on March fifth.
Okay.
And, and I think we were at a two-point-something decrease on April twenty-third. So we'd have to, so it's, it's an additional.
Okay.
Additional, well, I'm looking at it at a hundred and eighty-one, we're roughly ten million. It's probably an additional one and a half percent over the two and a half percent that we were at for April twenty-third. And we were at thirteen. As, as an increase, I'm sorry, what percentage? So it was thirteen point six five?
This is the increase.
So it's about a two percent decrease.
Two percent decrease from March, from April twenty-third.
About four percent from March.
And it was an increase. I'm sorry, I'm not articulating my questions because I don't talk in percent. The original increase in the budget for the TRSU was, the, the first budget we proposed was an increase of what percent year-over-year?
Fifteen point six nine for the TRSU.
And it's gone down.
And now we're at eleven point six eight. And these are always, when you're used to hearing with our local school districts, increases in the three, four percent range. So hearing these large numbers from the TRSU, I understand the, what? What kind of crazy are they doing in the TRSU? But consolidated within the TRSU is one of our most expensive lineups, which is our special education budget. And our special education budget on a regular basis goes up by a great deal, more than three or four percent. About the TRSU, then we'll go on to. Okay, all right. Now I can move stuff around on my screen so I can see where I fit in agreement. Looking not at the overall budget, actually at the summer budget, which we'll come back to. But we'll start with the overall, overall budget and then we will come back to that. So we have. What I want, I said. And we're looking, we're looking at an overall proposed budget for Green Mountain Unified School District of sixteen million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven. And we have on the sheet that we circulated here, in March, we put forward seventeen million, four hundred and forty thousand, thirty dollars. And on April twenty-third, we put forward seventeen million, seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight, rounding up and down, sixty-seven point something. This revised budget, revised budget proposal is at sixteen million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven. That is a three-point-seven-four percent increase over the current year. This includes five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars worth of cuts to the Green Mountain budget. And I'm going to run through those cuts for you here from what we have proposed on April twenty-third. We proposed putting back in several of the cuts that we proposed on April twenty-third that this board decided not to cut.
I have a request and, I'm sorry, thank you. And, and this may not be supported by anybody, but for me, I'd like to hear the, the numbers, the positions and the impact to our schools. I want to know what it's going to do to our kids to cut these positions, not just how much it's going to take out of the budget.
Can we just, can we just go through the numbers first and then have that discussion afterwards?
Yep. So we are proposing again, cutting the in-school support, the ISS in-school suspension position at Green Mountain, that's forty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars salary and benefits. We are proposing that we cut, we did not put this forward April twenty-third. But included in the Green Mountain budget had been putting a, putting back the second administrative assistant who was removed from Green Mountain starting in twenty-twenty. We had, when we were trying to drastically cut the budget, that position was turned into being a point-two position. The person who occupied it, let's call her English, she came with me to central office to be my administrative assistant at point-eight. And stayed with Green Mountain for point-two to cover things at the end of the day. And it has been a challenge to get everything done, so they proposed putting that position back in. We are going to propose that we pull that back out of the budget. Salary benefits, take that up to an eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollar, dollar cut. The effect that that has is that the people who occupy the other administrative positions within the building will have to take care of, take care of that work. And something that we certainly think is possible. We had a, our Spanish teacher is not going to be coming back next year. We proposed that we cut the Spanish position for next year and for next year only. The reason I'm proposing it, John will tell you all the reasons why he thinks that's a terrible idea. But the reason I'm proposing it is that as a result of a number of things, the number of students in Spanish was reduced this year. We have no one in Spanish III, we have no one in Spanish IV, and the number of students we have in I and II is reduced. Our current French teacher is cross-certified in Spanish and in French. And according to her, she is completely capable of handling doing both of these things and is in fact eager to do so. So that, and we would be looking at changing, in seventh grade, we do an exploratory class about both Spanish and French. We would not be offering that, although we have a variety of teachers who can be doing other exploratory and rotating through classes for our seventh graders in terms of the arts. So it is a position that I would say that in the following year, we would, I would be proposing, if I were here, that you treat this as an opportunity to reset. We've had a revolving door in Spanish of people here leaving partway through, coming in again. I think having a year in which we can cover the current students who are in Spanish. And next year, you can hire in March, rather than in June, a new teacher for that. It is a reasonable amount of savings. I know you want to go through all of them, but if you want to hear the opposing rationale, we can do that at the now or at the end.
Quick clarifying, just so I'm clear, this is the Spanish position, it wants Spanish.
We have one, this is it. All right?
I'd rather just keep going.
Okay, we had proposed cutting the steam coordinator and the adjacent steam supplies. This is a point-five position that is, that was put in place about six years ago by the Green Mountain Board. It is not directly student-facing. And as I discussed when we proposed it for the April vote, it is something that is going to be valuable to us. Not for next year. We do not have the ability to put on top of our teachers another new improvement initiative. We are dealing with our, our EL curriculum, which we are currently in our second year and doing an excellent job and seeing improvement. We've been putting new things in place for math and we will up that ante next year. For us to say we're also going to do an initiative around steam, it's too much to put on people's plates. To maintain this position for another year, just to maintain it, I think we could let it go. And you can hire somebody for it when we're ready to make use of it. Again, people will give you their view. And we also had from our principal at Cavendish, that we had for art this year. We had the person in a, that is a point-two, which was providing one day of art. The schedule that Dale has worked out, he is seeing the need for that to be a day and a half, rather than two days. So it's not a lot of money, but it was something put on the table that we could do a reduction from point-four to point-three and have a savings of eight thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. That means that people, that students at Cavendish would not be getting two full days of art, they would be getting a little less than that. We're also proposing that we cut the additional nursing position that we put in place when we went from having a part-time nurse at Cavendish, having a full-time nurse. When we decided to do that, I made the argument that if we were going to have a full-time nurse for seventy students, we should have more than a full-time nurse in place for a school with at the time, three hundred and forty students and two hundred and fifty students. So we hired a point-six-five person to alternate between those two schools to provide support. I am told by the principal at Chester Andover and by our full-time nurse at Green Mountain, that they don't, they don't need that additional assistance, that they are managing all right without it. So I'm putting that on the table. I will tell you that certainly not everyone agrees with that. But when the nurse at Green Mountain and the administration at Chester Andover are saying that that is something that we can manage, I would be remiss not to put it, put it out there. And Chester Andover has also said that they can let their building sub go, not that they want to. Not that they think we should. But as we will get to, there is a position that we haven't filled yet for Chester Andover. And so Joey's trying very hard to come up with ways to lower that budget without lowering something that is more student-centered, so.
Real quick, quick, continuing that one. One of the reasons for the building subs is because it actually reduces the amount of money that it costs to pay subs, which we will still need, right? So, no?
No, it makes it easier for us to have a sub. It increases the money because we pay benefits. We pay, we pay our building subs exactly the same daily rate, except that they are guaranteed that for a hundred and seventy-five days. And so we know they're going to be there. And because it's a full-time guaranteed job, they get benefits for it. But it means that we know we always have at least one person in the building. I'm not sure any of our building principals have ever had a day where we didn't need at least one substitute. And we have days when we don't have a building sub, where we can't fill those slots.
And what happens then?
Then we start talking to our teachers to see if they can cover classes during their prep. Right? Right, and we, Cheryl and I discussed that, you know, we, we want to be building our capital reserve. But if our budget is going to fail, it doesn't do us any good to do that. So we took an additional hundred thousand out of the capital reserve. That leaves enough money to cover the things that Tom knows we are definitely going to have to do. What it does is it doesn't do what we wanted to do. And what the current change in the funding formula would have allowed us to do, which is to put money aside for future issues. We also are, had both. So both, both Joey and Dale said they could reduce their office supplies. They really can, but they're going to say that they can't. So we are pulling an additional two thousand dollars out of both of those supply items. The hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, three hundred and three in here is Green Mountain's share of that TRSU reduction. So the reduction in the TRSU assessment is a hundred-and-twenty-three thousand because of the changes we put in place. We do have a couple, we have a couple of other decreases. There's change in benefits based on employees taking some different benefits. We have a reduction in the contingency due to cutting our new positions. And we have an increase to GM's administrative time because the one person who is, who is already there comes at seven and leaves at three. And Green Mountain needs to have somebody there from seven until four. If we're going to have one person do it, they will be entitled to overtime. So we need to put in for that, not only paying them for that extra hour, but it will be overtime for that extra hour. And again, the dental increase from three percent to eight-point-five. And then we have a bunch of, if there is a round four, before we go to that though, I do want to say that there, these two positions at the top of that. Chester Andover has an open literacy coordinator position because Beth Andrew is leaving and retiring, resigning. And currently at Cavendish have a open combined one-two position. We're not putting those to be cut, however, I've told the principals that I'm not going to bring this forward to the board to approve a hire unless you tell me tonight that you want those positions to stay in the budget. Because if we're going to cut things, I'd rather cut people who don't currently have a contract than talk about cutting people who do. So that's, that's a little off-topic here right now. And they, they are both going to tell you, and I agree, that those are essential positions, that we should fill them, that they are important to have in place.
So you'd be asking for an answer on those two.
I, I want to know whether at your next meeting, you want to hear the people that they are proposing to hire. Because I, usually, once we start interviewing and we have people we like, we give them a letter of intent that tells them that we intend to hire them if they are approved at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. I also tell them that up until this point, while we've sometimes disagreed about administrators, the board has, without exception, approved every single teacher we have ever put forwards. I'm not going to put forward a teacher to you if I'm not sure that you're going to fund the position.
All right, so now questions?
Okay, got to the capital reserve. At one time, we had ongoing two hundred, we talked in there. And then the first budget, there was an additional four hundred and seventy. Where are we now?
You guys think I've seen it? Nobody can. Okay.
It's going both ways, man. Okay. In the very first budget, we had a capital reserve, an ongoing capital reserve allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand. In the first budget, there was an additional four hundred and seventy thousand, most of that was. My question is, where are we now?
Four hundred thousand is in the capital reserve budget.
So it went down from seven twenty to four hundred?
Yes.
And is that, is that four hundred, I know Todd has planned fire doors.
The fire doors, yeah.
Paving, track, is that?
Not, not the track.
Okay. But, but do you have a sense of where it's going? Is that, is that? Is that a reserve or is, are there immediate needs at this point?
Well, beyond, I mean, I can certainly glad to hear from Todd about it, but beyond knowing that we have to pay for the fire doors and the fire marshals updates, I'm not sure that we have anything specific we know we're going to do. We have things that we think we're going to need to do, but not that we're certain. That accurate?
Very. Thank you.
I'm sure that your principals would like to tell you why we shouldn't cut any of these.
Yes. Why, we shouldn't cut the positions that are unfilled?
Well, no, why don't, why don't we start with?
Gonna start with me, okay. All right, we did have a good meeting on Friday. I agreed with a lot of the stuff and we do, we do need to make an effort on both sides. When it impacts kids, that's when my ears start to prick up and I'd say, hmm, gotta really think hard about this. So just to give you a. So just to give you a a brief synopsis of where I'm at and how I feel. Um, not that it's going to be way different from what our superintendent said, although it will vary. Um, cutting the I S S coordinator, I brought that on board by writing a grant for E S R and it was approved and we got that. It's been, in my mind, it's been very successful. I know that um, some people feel that it's a holding place for naughty kids, which it kind of is. But the the person that we have there has been able to reach a lot of students through restorative conversations. She documents a lot of um, of her activities, she documents all of our discipline referrals so that we can track data pretty well. Or a lot better than than what I'd seen. Um, can I live without it? Uh, we probably could and maybe even an option to reduce it to maybe a part-time position and trying to cover it with what hours are left from teachers or other staff, although they're diminishing as we speak. But I I I think we maybe could get by with that. And again, I'm just being open and honest. Uh, the admin assistant, uh, it's a great idea to support outreach outreach options, helping us with a lot of stuff in the office. Uh, because I do feel that Kelly does a great job on the front desk and she's worth to me one and a half people. Um, I know she only gets paid for one, but she's worth one and a half. Um, it's a good idea, can we live without that? Um, yeah, Kate and I, did I tell you that yet? No, no. Kate and I will pull up a little bit of the slack on there. Uh, and I've talked to Kelly a little bit and we we've got a plan that we can make it work. Um, it will involve a little bit of overtime if we have the other person or one of the other two that we are thinking to maybe cover that one hour. It's not going to make a huge dent though in what you're doing. Um, the Spanish teacher, that that's the main event. Uh, that was kind of a, didn't see that one coming. Um, because we evaluated our Spanish teacher and in in reference to numbers, I know this is my first year here, but in reference to numbers, um, I think a lot of it was to do with um, maybe over the past two or three years, the continual new person coming in, um, not maybe the right person as we came to find out to promote the program. Uh, we do have five applicants already, three of which look very healthy for that position. Uh, and I feel that for our students, for our younger students, the exploratory programs, which I observed a few of those in in my official observations that I've taught with the teachers also. Um, the students get a lot out of those and it it kind of, it gives them that encouragement to maybe want to take up language. And I know not everyone's going to college, but colleges are looking for two and three years of languages now. Uh, also, um, as kids move on, I did sit in on an eighth grade Spanish one class. So we're giving those students the opportunity, because we're a seven through twelve school, having come from a nine through twelve school, we're a seven through twelve school, we're giving them the opportunity to begin with the teachers in the program and work their way through. And having up to Spanish four or Spanish five, if if that student is is really driven to to go that far and the family would like it, that that's what they're going to lose out on. Uh, and I I just, the dual qualified, um, much as I love Ms. Filskoff and she could probably do it, I just think we're impacting kids in this position. It was, it's just too big an impact on kids. So that that is the one area that I'd like us not to take down. Uh, having worked with the other areas, uh, I think I understand the tax situation. Uh, I understand the gray areas of our community members understanding what the actual impact is on their taxes. We are, we are making a huge effort to reduce it as best we can. Um, and even, uh, the ladies didn't cover, we actually reduced, I believe we reduced our English supplies by a few thousand as well. So again, everybody's aware and they're all trying. I know two or three thousand doesn't sound a lot, but everybody's chipping in to say, well, we don't want to impact kids and we'll we'll be very tight on what we're doing all over the place. So, um, that's my best pitch. Now, I've spoken to Pam, yeah, I don't know if you want to add anything? Yeah, oh, sorry, yes.
Yeah, I just had had two quick questions. What do kids who are in in-school suspension do if there is no coordinator?
Um, well, that'll be something we'll have to work out.
In the past, we have staffed it with either teachers who have open periods or with other other staff members. Because this is, again, it's a a fine idea. It's a new position. We have not had it before and and could manage. And again, I John isn't saying anything I disagree with. I I would say that I'm not sure that there is anything that we are proposing that doesn't affect students. And everything affects students. And the question about what is your your opinion about what is a bridge too far and what is too much? That's that's your your decision. I I our capital reserve of this.
One more quick clarification, which courses or classes will not be offered without the Spanish teacher?
We would, well, we would eliminate, I know Pam's working on the schedule draft, but we know you're a little bit, Pam, but we would eliminate the exploratory courses. Um, and.
We'd eliminate the seventh grade exploratory course. We'd have to eliminate the the eighth grade entry level, French and Spanish one. Um, we would be able to, if on paper, you'd be able to offer French one, two, and three, and Spanish one, two, and three. We have students to fill those. Um, it does become um, the scheduling nightmare of the puzzle because um, in the past, when you've got two teachers, Spanish one and Spanish two can be offered at the same time. French one and Spanish one can be offered at the same time. So other courses and teachers, um, how they're spread out. So to and to not to have as many conflicts possible. Um, I do, um, if that answers your question?
It does, yeah.
Yeah, I think that we have combined, as you move up, Spanish three and four, and we've got French three and four together. But um, I I do worry at the uncertainty if we were to cut this position as we try to, I mean, I've heard this board say we want to recruit kids. And if we are going to cut a position, we go with uncertainty of what could happen down the road. And do we want to become a one-language school? I mean, and I and we, yes, we have a teacher who teaches two and she's amazing. And if that was the only constraint, she'd be able to do it all. Um, but with everything else, choices and locking in things, but the potential to lose a language, I mean, Bell's Falls only offers one language. So if you're going to start competing for kids, that and they'd only be able to go, they may be limited. If we have a real huge influx of, you know, level one and two, there's only so much, um, and again, I know that's projecting down, but it it does worry and, um, as John said, we've had a rocky road with Spanish. So I don't believe our numbers are low in Spanish because they don't want to take the language. There were other factors that influenced white students. And we lost two teachers in the middle of the school year.
What is the enrollment in the language classes of like, like numbers wise? How many kids are?
Um, in our middle school, our French is twenty, um, Spanish has ten. Spanish, let me, if I'll come back to that, let me, let's try, I left that, I'm going to get.
Are you twenty, twenty-eight?
Yeah. It won't take me long. If there's another question, I can come back to that.
But also want to be clear, we're not proposing that you decide not to offer Spanish. We're proposing a a year to reset after having ad disruption and offering it, offering it in in a less budget fraud year when you can interview and for that position.
Wish we could offer it sooner.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, might not be a popular opinion, but is there a possibility of offering online foreign language classes to free up the schedule a little bit?
So online, yes, if they start at the beginning. No foreign language program is linear. So what we do, you know, you you start, what happens in the first year of a language, that same teacher picks up where he did, which could be different when you go to other schools. If you start on the entry level like B T V L C and continue in B T V L C, um, that's smooth. You can return, usually you can return to your home school because of the the different um, parameters and setup of an online class like that. And there's not no flexibility in the curriculum piece, but to come from an in-house. And you couldn't do three years in Green Mountain and then go to a Spanish four.
Yeah.
But it can work the other way, certainly.
G M has the capabilities, resources to offer that to kids relatively easily?
Yes, but we're limited in um, what we have in the budgets. And we, what's in the budget is what we do is pretty, we hit that pretty on target.
Students are allowed, not in grade seven, but when they're in high school, they're allowed to take two online classes.
Well, they can take any high school online class through the B T V L C or another, or there are other programs that we participated. Um, and then their offer after their tenth grade year, so tenth grade summer and eleventh and twelfth are offered two dual enrollment courses. Um, paid by the state of Vermont.
I'm remembering that. I took Latin, which is why I, yeah, no, we think we had this discussion, yeah, eight years ago. Thank you, Pam.
Yeah.
All right.
I've had conversations with several people who are very concerned about the mental health issues at the school and behavior in particular and the extent to which it disrupts the the school. Um, you know, I think that mentally dedicated mental health specialist, um, at least, at least one, um, is is sort of mandatory, given, given what I'm hearing.
We have a full-time position.
Okay, so that the the I O S coordinator is is.
It's not a special, it's not a mental health specialist.
Okay, so.
That that is, and and it's, again, she does a great job, but she's not somebody with a degree or experience in being a mental health professional. And that's not what the purpose of the position is.
Okay, so would would the loss of this position negatively affect the character and behavior of the high school?
That that answer depends on who you talk to.
I can, I can just speak to, um, one of the things we've worked on this year is having a um, a form and a process that we use to help students process after there's a behavior and think about their impact, the impact that it has on their teachers, the impact that it has on their peers. Um, I believe that there are enough pieces of that in place. We can refine it more, where you could have other people, multiple people filling that role, who can continue that process with students. So I I wouldn't see that as being detrimental to social, emotional well-being or mental health.
And again, we, your administrative team, myself and Bridget, doesn't think you should make any of these cuts. You should, you should leave every one of them in and go forward with the exact same.
Look, to be clear, we put forward a budget and voted yes on a budget. It's not us that said.
That's right. But but it's your budget to decide on that the board members who voted yes. But again, not every one of the board members supported the budget.
I would argue it's our budget, it's the it's the staff's budget, it's your budget, it's the community's budget at this point.
That's another quick question about the in-school suspension position. I mean, obviously, it was utilized enough for a full-time position we put in for it. What is like the average rolling head count with it? I mean, what's the frequency that you got students in there?
Um, yeah, I do, I have that, I have that as a routine. Um, I I would say almost every day there is someone in there. Some days are busy and others, but I'd be happy to get and get your account for every day that we've had it this year.
And and that's my understanding is that there are days when there are lots of people in there. There are also days when there's no one in there.
So I I mean, I'd be happy to get, I could get a, now of how many were in each day and the some of the reasons why students aren't in there, um, what what they do work on when they're in there as far.
And it's a, so they are, and they are working on stuff, they're not just sitting there doing idle time.
They're doing, they're doing classwork. Uh, part of, part of her role right now is to process with students, whether in there, help them self-regulate, help them um, recover within themselves so they can return to the classroom. They will do work for a short period of time. It could be, it could be a period, it could be a half a day, a full day, not usually much longer than that. And then they're back in the classroom. They take their their newfound skills to hopefully not be back in there. And certainly, I, I, as I say, I have the data written down, I haven't looked at it all, but there are some students that were frequent flyers in September and they're hardly ever in there now. So they've learned something. Is it attributable to that? I don't know, is it paternity? And I don't know, I'll have to say anything for that.
All right, so in regards to what our goals are for tonight, I mean, like, I think it's clear, obviously, the administration isn't wanting to do any of this. The, you know, we put forth two budgets on that the board primarily, you know, some exceptions, felt was acceptable. The voters have decided it's not acceptable. So our goal tonight is to either decide to put forth this third proposal at sixteen million four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars, or if we feel that there are things that just absolutely should not come out, if we can, if we have other ideas on how to, you know, change this proposal or we can decide to put forth the previous budget, which again Springfield is doing. They're, they basically said, this is the budget we need to run effectively, you know, and if not, then kind of the dire cuts will come. So, um, you know, I I don't think we need to kind of be defending amongst each other what we think we want or don't want. We know, we know this is all what's needed for the kids. Um, so if people have ideas about whether you'd like to see something absolutely come, you know, come out, stay in, and then if you could, you know, follow up that idea with a proposal. Okay?
I I have a question, not not a proposal. Um, I don't understand why we're cutting the Chester Andover sub, um, building sub and not the Cavendish County Elementary School building sub in this budget.
Yeah, so I actually noticed that too.
So so the the reason for that is initially, well, again, Joy would like to keep them. She is also has a concern about being able to make some reductions to the Chester Andover budget and not have to not fill that literacy coordinator position. It is also the case that, and and the reason we would remove, and Dale said if we needed to, he would offer up that building sub as well. And I I know that we have had the building sub at Cavendish has been the same person for all of the years that it has been available and has been um, become an integrated part of of the school and the for the students and that level of familiarity. At Chester Andover, it was, I think we're on, we have consistency through this year, but I don't believe that person was there for all three years. I think it was.
I I can't speak to that history because I inherited into this staff that I have right now. Um, I would say that I I was very frugal with my budget this year and really put forth a flat-lined budget from last year because that position was important to me and I had to take it off of E S R funds and put it into my budget. And so I put forth a very lean budget in order to keep that position. Um, just like the sub at Cav- at Cavendish, the person that we have is excellent. He connects with the kids. I think when you talk about social and emotional stability for elementary school kids to have, when their teacher is out, that is highly. To have, when their teacher is out, that is highly dysregulating for them. And so to have a student, I mean, to have a teacher in place that students know and can connect with and they trust. And can can provide some consistency is is a missed opportunity if we end up cutting that. That being said, here we are. I was asked to reevaluate my budget and something had to give. And that's where we landed. As Lauren says, it's not what I want to do. However, I do am looking forward to advocating for keeping the position that is now vacant. Because that is also a forward-facing um position to students, a reading position, a literacy position, which we have identified. As a priority in our district when we adopted our new um continuous improvement plan. So that's where we landed.
Having been that literacy coordinator in an elementary many years, I appreciate the need for that position.
Uh, not yet.
Just a clarification.
Okay.
Can somebody clarify what it means to take something out this year within the whole funding shifting sands? Take something out this year and put it back next year?
Can that, can that be answered during? I just want to get through this. Is that, I I don't think it's during. We will come back to it.
Is it possible to hear from Joey and Dale? I know we just heard from Joey, but we have to hear from John about the impacts on this budget. I don't have any more to add, but.
No, that, I mean, unless you have a question or you need a clarification, that I'm I'm happy to.
Looking at the grade, the grade one-two position that's um on the budget. We have a kindergarten class with twenty students this year, so they're going in the first grade. So that would be twenty-seven students to one teacher. While the teacher in that position is outstanding, I think the, having the split combination class with the curriculums, it's very challenging to teach. So I think having the two teachers in grade one-two is just really good for those kids. Of course, it's early intervention, let the kids to get the skills early, so they don't fall behind. So I think it's, I think it would be harmful for the kids not to have two teachers in that position. But it's, that's, I mean, because you have twenty-seven kids to one teacher and one-two combination, that would be a lot, a lot for one teacher. I think that's what we need. I think it's important to have that teacher in that position, that additional, that additional support in the lower grades. And I think the other thing I think I want to say is that it's really hard to get teachers this time of year and we, that wasn't really great in the school system. We don't have a lot of applicants, so right now is prime time to get great candidates. So with this is also, we're losing great candidates in this process. So I think that now have people that I'm interviewing that are really great, I've lost one to one school system. So I mean, it's just really a critical time to hire and. You know, in a month from now, they're not going to be there. So it's really just, timing is not really great with this as well, finding a great best for the kids.
So I I would like to propose something or at least discuss a proposal, not making a motion at this point of um. Cutting the, or I don't know if you do anything with the TRSU budget. But that my idea would be the TRSU budget looks like the new proposed, but in terms of the GM USD budget. The only cuts I would want to keep is the point six-five nurse position. And the reduction in the capital reserve, but put everything else from the GM budget back in.
Yeah, I was curious to hear a little more about the STEAM coordinator position. If I was understanding you right, Lauren, it seemed like from your perspective, it would be somehow beneficial to me. I I know you're not saying, you're not supporting it, I get it. Um, but it seemed like having that position. Remain in the budget might add a layer of complexity for teachers that might not be beneficial.
Having, having as the the way our, the way our initiatives and our work is going to happen next year. We are not going to be moving forward with the, with the um proposal. For the increase and um um improvement. To the amount uh of STEM um learning that we want to see happen in our K.A. classes. Because to do that would be to add another initiative on top of of other things that we have in place. We want to do it, but you, if if you have five priorities, you don't have any. You need to, you need to limit the number of things that you're focused on. And next year is not the year for this.
So that that combined fifty-two, four-twenty um would is currently unfilled. And it, or no, it is filled. It is filled, but it might be underutilized.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I'm confused now. What I was hearing you say was if we cut the STEAM coordinator, we won't have a STEAM program.
No.
Okay.
We, we will not, so the reason the STEAM coordinator was hired, not a teacher, a coordinator. In my opinion, they were hired to create a plan, not hired to teach. They were hired to create a plan for improving how we deliver STEM education to our students. And and that for and I, for a variety of reasons, for the first couple of years that the person was in this position. That's not what they did. I wasn't in this position. There are all sorts of reasons for that. By the time I was in this position to oversee it, we were in COVID. So we were not moving forwards with initiatives to change much of anything. So I I worked with uh this, this person to um go through, not this year. But last year with a, the reason for this position is to create a plan to eh to look at how we improve. That instruction. And she spent the year, three-quarters of the year doing just that. And did a beautiful job of it and created a a beautiful plan for how we will uh integrate. Those concepts into what we teach in our classrooms. And it will be a change for our teachers. You have to implement it. And to try to do that while we are implementing a new EL curriculum and new math instruction. Will mean that we don't do any of those things well. So we said, we're not, we're not going to move forwards. We're doing that. What she is doing this year, she's been helping to do some coaching for teachers and assisting in a variety of ways. It is not wasted. It is valuable, but she is not a classroom teacher. And next year, we are going to continue to be in a place where we are not doing a full-court press to implement this new program. I, we did not initially propose that we cut this because, yeah. However, if we're in a place of looking at what can we eliminate that is not going to directly affect our students in their classrooms next year. This is something that.
I appreciate, I appreciate. So just, just to clarify, so this plan that's in place can be implemented by somebody that you ha- that we would hire. When we can implement the program.
If, if I, if uh uh my recommendation would be that you want to have somebody. Who has a science, engineering, technology background, come in to be um a a assist our all curriculum director. In implementing this program when we're ready to do it, which is not next year. Thank you.
I have those numbers.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Um, this, this present year, um, in our Spanish one level, we had fourteen students. Um, so that's both in middle school and high school. Spanish two, we had thirteen. Our Spanish exploratory that rotates through the entire seventh grade, there were forty um students, um approximately. Um, French one, there were twenty-eight students spreading it across middle school and high school. French two, there were six. French three and French four, we taught in a combined class that had seven, French three, two. French four, and then about forty-four um from the exploratory French. I, I went by what we teach at every quarter um to the seventh grade. So I think that's a little more than about fifty in the entire.
Thank you. Okay, um, so again, kind of circling back, um, we need to decide as a board. If we're going to propose the new budget or the revised proposed budget. Or if we have other ideas regarding numbers. Um, one of the things I was looking at, and I I don't really have a a position on it, to be honest with you, but in regards to Spanish. Um, you know, if we ended up cutting both subs, if we felt the Spanish teacher was more important than the subs, cutting both subs could fund the Spanish teacher. Um, you know, but then we're losing stability for the elementary school. So I think, you know, in in regards to uh that. I guess it's just going to be, feels more of a priority. In regards to the GM admin, time to cover. Um, I mean, it's a small increase, but is there any way just the day could be shifted? I mean, from seven to four, like from eight to four.
Then you need somebody there at seven.
There's nobody else there at seven AM.
You need somebody who can answer the phone and and give information to people. And 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 having been in that, there are lots of things that I I am a relatively happy, we can do without that. We can do without that. You need to have a consistent person at the front desk. Who under, who knows how to answer the phone appropriately, who knows the people that they're talking to. I mean, and and it, you know, when you get a new person in, you've had a new person in, there's a learning curve. But once they learn it, then they're, but having that be a rotation, we've done that before. Where we've had somebody who comes in for the last hour of the day to cover it, it's, it's not.
I am, and it's my question about that is, um, Kelly is a valuable employee. Cutting her to a point eight, that.
No, no, that's not what's happening. Kelly, Kelly Goodrich is going to, and Kelly has said she can do this. Kelly has said that she, she believes that she can handle it, that she will be working instead of from seven to three. She'll be working from seven to four. Um, the, the, what, what has been in place is Kelly English. We can't hire anybody else named Kelly. Kelly, Kelly English was, we had both of them at the high school when I was principal there. And when I went to Kelly, Kelly came with me and we set it up to be point eight and point two. So that she could be there to cover the phone and to provide assistance and could still provide the assistance to me.
But after a conversation with Kelly Goodrich and the other two and the assistants. That for me is one area that we could cover and that eighty-one thousand, nine hundred, eighty-two thousand would be. Certainly a substantial part and we could cover that, we could manage that.
Thank you.
The hardest cuts on struggle was here. The, the in-school suspension, um, I know it's not a class. But it's an accountability program that I think is important. And I like what Steve said, I heard a lot of concerns and issues about behavioral issues derailing entire classes. Um, kind of having a full-time position, that sounds like you're being proactive and productive with it and not just sitting in. Silent penance like when I was in school. I, I see value in that and I have a hard time uh getting rid of that. And saying with Spanish, I know that hiring right now, you said it's not ideal and it is a small program and maybe we could. Get through with doubling up the French and Spanish. Um. It's also, that's a hard cut for me. I'd like to see those two at least put back in and. Maybe the building sub too, because it sounds like there is benefit there. Yeah, could you, could we put this, is there some way that we could do a highlight uh of your list, of your list, Lauren? If we were to, if you were to agree to try to uh highlight the ones, it'd be quicker possibly to highlight the ones. And then we say yea or nay to it?
Um, if, if I.
Are you asking to take a vote on every, on every proposal?
Just, just to keep it on the, uh, put it up on the, on the screen and that way you could highlight. That we can then.
Draft together?
Yeah, we're trying to put a draft together fast to help with, there may be some items that we all agree on that really quickly can we can get to you. And say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna propose that we put uh of the, whatever it is, back in.
Yeah, give me a minute, we'll see if we can do that.
Yeah.
I I'm still not clear. Are you looking, do you want?
Uh, it's kind of a little slow as his hand up, just so you.
Did you want to?
When, when you get this.
I I guess that's why I want to be clear. Are you looking to have this go up?
Yes, and then we go down the line, go to rate the S five, exactly.
Hold them or just kind of vote on keeping them through?
Vote to highlight, keep in, highlight it back in, if that would work. I don't know, just trying to help.
And do you mean an official vote or do you mean like a poll, like trying to get a sense of where people feel?
A sense of what we can collaboratively add to the list and say, okay, for Lauren to put it back together. We can, then we can vote on it.
Was your hand up?
Yes, my hand is up.
Um, I'm also wondering, I know this would be a change to the agenda, but could we potentially hear from the public before we're actually making any vote? Um, because I think this is a place where we're talking about specific items where it might be really good to hear from people before.
That's fine. So to change, that's fine. So to change the agenda after we've accepted it, we'll need a three-quarters vote. So if you'd like to make that motion to change the agenda, we can vote on it.
Okay, I move to change the agenda to have public comment. Soon-ish and before any action on the budget.
Do you, do you want to move it or add a public comment? If you still want to throw a public comment at the end? Or or, because there's public comments.
Yeah, I would add. So I'm moving to add a public comment before we take any action on the budget.
Okay.
And I second that motion. That was why I had my hand up too.
Okay, all in favor of adding an addition, uh, an additional public comment prior to any action on the fiscal twenty-five budget?
I.
Scott has his hand up, but I don't.
Yeah, you've got to vote.
I vote yes for that, that motion. Um, and then my, my next question would just be. Um, if we could just vote through line items of, of what we agree on. That should be in this budget or or not in this budget, just to clarify things.
Do you want to do a line item vote?
Yeah, for like the subs or, you know, take the subs out or don't take the subs out, take the French or Spanish teacher out, put the Spanish teacher in.
I just want to be careful because if we have any disagreement on a line item, we're going to have to do roll call for every single one. So I just wanted to. So I just, you know, so if we're clear, we're gonna put this list up, we're gonna highlight, we're gonna go through and the ones that we want to add back in. Yes?
Highlight it back in, highlight it back in would be helpful.
Okay, and then we can have, and then we can discuss, yeah. And then if we have to go line item, then we will have to vote each one. All right. And um we have added in a public comment prior to action.
The, the one thing that I would add is, as you're going through, you're doing these individual line items. When we get to a point of actually talking about an overall approval for a budget proposal. I, I would like, I want to advocate that you are doing your best to make sure that you have unanimous support for it. I think it is a problem when we have board members who don't support the budget. And we unfortunately last time had support for the budget at one meeting and then didn't have unanimous over the next. And I would, I I would, uh, I was going to say beg, but I'll go with encourage you not to do that. Because I think that affects um voters when they hear that there are board members who don't support the budget.
All right, so um, I guess we can go through. So is adding in. Adding back in ISS position, is that something that is unanimous?
No.
Are we going to go over the TRSU too?
No.
You don't have.
We don't have any authority about here. Okay.
But you can make suggestions, but.
Right, couldn't we suggest like we want an increased budget cut? We, like you came back with a four, we could say we would like five percent decrease in the SU budget.
And and I'm going to push you then that you need to tell me.
I am not making that recommendation. I'm just saying that. I am not making that recommendation, I'm just saying that is what we, that is the authority we would have, so right.
So, and that would be, so when we get to the line item of the, the assessment, that's where we could make that decision. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I hope one of the special education.
Okay. Alright, so uh, I think I heard Scott saying no, so we're already at an impasse with that one, so we would not do, I, I guess, how do you want it, so are we gonna? Vote on that individually now or are we going to go through and then go back on the ones we disagree?
We already know you've got some people saying no, so you would need to go through and do a roll call if you want to do that and also just a reminder of this.
And it's gonna be.
If you, that people have to be sure that if there's a reason you need to recuse yourself from the vote, to make sure that you do that.
I just, I just wonder if we can just get sense, we're not, not necessarily a formal vote on this, but just a sense of how people feel. How close are we to um, a unanimous decision and maybe hearing what people's concerns are? Rather than doing an official vote line by line.
I, I think that's reasonable, um, can I ask, not a vote, a poll? How does everyone feel about putting forward, forward the proposed budget as it stands, the sixteen million? Is that one you do not want to put forward?
I, I will, I'm not qualified to, there's only a couple people sitting at this table. Daughter on a school, I am gonna go with Lauren's recommendation and the principal's recommendation. That's, that's the way I do it.
Okay, right.
And I, I agree, I know, I know this is, this is starting to get real bad. And I'm, I'm really very, very proud that uh, they've done a tremendous, tremendous job. On finding this for the taxpayers.
So I'm, I'm polling if you're okay with going forward with the sixteen million right now.
I'm not.
We're not, okay. Steve?
I'm not.
Okay, Lisa?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I agree with a lot of the suggestions, not all.
So you do not, okay, correct, Kate?
I do not. I'm, I'm the same.
You do not, okay, Casey?
I do not.
Okay, alright, so we are not. I'm sorry.
I do not.
Okay. Sorry, I don't mean to keep forgetting you. Um, okay, so we will not be putting forward the proposed budget of sixty-nine, so we're looking to add things back in. Alright, I guess we are gonna have to go through. Alright, um. So the ISS, we already know there is, we'll go back to voting on it, that that one's not in agreement. How do we feel about the second admin position being cut? Is anyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
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 So that one we can.
Am I highlighting things?
Hi- highlight things, or highlighting things we're gonna, highlight things we're gonna take out, but we're gonna have to go back to the things that.
Alright, so I'm not gonna highlight anything this time.
Yeah.
Um, Spain, uh, Spanish position, that was one that I'm assuming we're all gonna go back to. Okay, steam coordinator position?
It says to people leave.
Alright, uh, supplies, I'm assuming you wanna keep that one in there, okay. Um, reducing the CTES from point four to point three. I would okay with that one. Cut point six-five FTE nursing.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, cut the uh, CAES building sub. Um, reduce the capital reserve.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I'm nervous on that one.
So no. I'm sorry, we just gotta get this part and then we will go for the ones that we're, okay.
Thank you.
Um, CAES principal supplies. We okay cutting that?
Yes.
Right?
We don't need to, that's not really.
Uh, CTS principal supplies. Yes. Um, so obviously we don't control the reduction of the TRS U, but we, we'll come back and discuss that one. As if you're looking to increase that, that number or decrease it, um. Let's see, change in, that's about something we've not changed and reduction continues.
Can't seem to change the ones that go up.
Yeah. Okay, so now the ones that we need to address and vote on. Um, wait, did I miss?
Well, no, I was just gonna ask whether you wanted to, to make the statement while you're taking those calls, whether you're telling me that. You want us to go forward or others of intent.
That's fine. So we're gonna put it now, um, alright, do we want to keep the CIS literacy coordinator in the budget at ninety-four-four?
I do, yes.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Scott?
Uh, no.
And then the CTE.
Can't see the, Lauren, could you scroll down a little bit more, please? I can't see everything, that's the hardest part.
Well, that's round.
No, we're not going here yet.
No.
And so, and just to be clear, that's not a suggested cut, this, what we're talking about right now would be if we're gonna continue to go forward with these two positions, so that. They don't have to make these cuts out.
We need to know whether to give, whether they're being interviewed, a letter of intent that says we are intending to keep these positions. It doesn't mean that you, you can't change your mind, but I would hope you wouldn't, that we're, we shouldn't be telling people. That we have a position available for them, if it is something that this board is thinking they're gonna have.
Makes sense?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, so is that one, the literacy coordinator one we would move forward with?
To keep.
Yes.
To keep, yes, to offer a letter. Scott?
Yes. Now that I can see everything.
And then the CTES grade one to teacher.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, alright. So, now is where you're gonna highlight, and to be clear, we are highlighting ones that we are going to put back in. Alright, so um, in voting for the act to keep the ISS position.
I'm a no.
I was gonna say, do we need to, I don't know if we need to do these as actual votes or, I don't know how to do this.
It's just a brief, second.
So if you're, if, if, it depends on what you're doing with this. If, if you are setting up something for you to look at, then you can, you can do this by acclamation. If you are making a motion and you are making a decision that you intend to stick with. Unless you follow the rules for rescinding a vote in the future, then somebody has to make a motion and you have to, you have to do it that way. What you're doing is having a discussion about how many people wanna keep this, how many people want to lose it, then you're in a different place. So are you making a motion for your proposal, for your budget, that you are telling us you want something put back in? By a majority vote, and again, I'm telling you, that you wind up with something that your whole board may not support.
But I think if we go through and do, so that'll be seven different motions. And if it goes through by majority votes, then that would be the next proposed budget by adding them back in.
Yep.
And if we do that as a board, are we gonna have unanimous support? Even if like you don't get something, are we going to as a board now, you know, vote and stand together with this?
Yes, absolutely, for sure.
Okay.
Could we, could we do each one by motion or can we have a discussion and all agree that it's a majority?
Correct.
Yeah, once we, once we've done it, we'll vote on the budget as we have now agreed and. Nobody will object even if they didn't get what they're looking for.
Um. I just wanna say that I'm desperate to hear from the public and hope. We hear from, before we start doing this voting, and I can't make that guarantee, I don't know what it's gonna be, so I, I strive to be in support. I hear what you're saying, Lauren, but I, I don't wanna commit to something that I can't guarantee, that's it.
Okay, so, does this board wanna hear from the public prior to making these decisions about these positions?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then we are going to have public comments in regards to these issues. And Amber doesn't know you, so please say your name and your town first.
Alright, um, before, before you start, um, do you want to leave this up? Which means that, um, it becomes harder for anybody, well not, it becomes harder for people out there to see who's talking.
Well, I think we can take that for now.
It's the best.
I'm, I'm happy to go first, but I also, you know, I'm loud and, and, and not shy, so if somebody wants to go first, by all means, begging, alright. So, I have brought something for you because I, first off, I want to applaud you because you're doing a very difficult task. And you wouldn't have put it in the budget in the first place, I didn't bring enough for everybody so they'll have to share, and you just took most of them. So, you're doing, you know, everybody wants, you know, if we had all the money in the world, we would have passed the budget to begin with and the, and the taxpayers are in that same place. Um, so, and I know that the statutes for how it has to be presented to the voters are very specific. Language and color and lines and such. So what I would suggest is put something else to the voters alongside it that would not be binding. But would give you some information as to why they voted no, at least, you know, some of them voted no twice. They may vote no a third time, it'd be nice to know what it is that they don't like. And uh, I, you, you have a, a, a highly educated legal mind over there, she will look at this and go, well, this is a, a little bit of a piss pole. I was just trying to be, uh, you know, descriptive of some broad areas without having it feed the entire budget that people had to be circling. Uh, for those of you, because I definitely didn't bring it up for all of you, it is fantastic to see all of you come out to a meeting like this. Uh, the, what I said was, in considering that your vote today, which of the following areas do you wanna see less money budgeted? Please circle all that apply, leave blank if none, I'll give you a copy, show me, thanks. Uh, district administration, elementary school administration, elementary classroom teachers, elementary building maintenance improvement. Elementary specials programs, elementary supplies slash technology. High school administration, high school classroom teachers, high school building ma- uh, maintenance and improvement, sorry Todd. Uh, high school, uh, sports programs and high school supplies and technology. Circle the one that you want to see less money going to that thing. Then below it, I tried to make it fit on one page, in considering your vote today, which of the following areas do you wanna see more money budgeted to? Same list, circle, and then at the bottom, please provide any additional comments on the back of this form. Because one of the problems is the communication between the public and particularly the voting public, not even the meeting attending public. But the people who actually vote, what are they thinking, and this would give, something like this would provide the opportunity for that. Um, I want, I want, you know, I wanna say one thing about the school nurse, because as you may remember, when I served on the board, that was one of the things. A school nurse is like a seatbelt, and if you have a three-hundred-pound passenger, you know, who's forty-six, forty-seven, huh? Uh, or you have a hundred-and-fifty-pound sixteen-year-old passenger, you need a seatbelt. It, you don't say, well, you're only half as big, so we can get half a seatbelt, that's not how it works. You have kids in the building all day, kids bump themselves, have medical emergencies, have medical, not so much emergencies. You need a medical professional in the school all day long. Um, administration is on my list that I just gave you, uh, is, is, is on the list. And Lauren, I really appreciate you saying, well, if you can tell me where to cut somebody, I would tell you where to cut somebody. Julie, you're a lovely person and a great educator, uh, uh, Emma is a, is a, is a lovely person and a great educator. And when you were a curriculum director, also very good, but that's a place that you could cut out of the budget. I think it's significant that when you talk about cutting somebody from the, the office, uh, the administration office. It's a hundred and something thousand dollars, when you are talking about the person who deals within school suspension, it's forty-five thousand dollars. I think that's a position that we could, let's try it for a year and see how we do, see if all the teachers are teaching random crazy stuff and it's not coordinated. And it's not preparing the kids for high school. Um. The other thing you'll notice on my list is I've got the elementary school and the high school separated as categories, again, you know, lovely people. But I think it might be time for Green Mountain to go. Uh, it is a building that is well below capacity, and when we talk about, well, we can reduce cabinages. Because we don't have as many people as the building was built for, well, that argument applies uh, just as much to, to Green Mountain. Uh, now, the difference between the two, because you're gonna walk plus those, uh, is that we have a school, Joey, right? You know, you would love to be able to find an extra space for fifty students. We are in a space for an extra fifty students, right here in this building. It's a different situation with Green Mountain because we don't have another high school that is, is brimming with, with, with people who want to, want to come to it. The other thing is, is that that's a building, as you all know, that is severely contaminated with carcinogens. It is not healthy for the students, it is a decidedly unhealthy work environment. I can't believe that there's not picket lines from the union. I, I mean, really, I mean, if it was a coal mine, it was a, a steel mill, they'd be singing songs and, and, and getting the, the fire hoses turned on. It would make Columbia look like a, you know, cakewalk.
Dave, you have ten more seconds.
Okay, it is also massively wasteful during winter to operate it, and we, we went through that this year. You know, you're just literally burning money. Alright, the other thing, I know, there's also a significant percentage of students who go somewhere else.
I'm sorry.
I know, I will sit down.
Thank you.
If someone else would yield me their two minutes, I would, I would.
Is there someone else that would like to speak? Well, I, it also can be, if you'd like to stay for the rest of the construction committee meeting that happens after this, I can have to know that.
I, I am planning to.
Okay.
Hi, Sandra, just, just when we make the list of, this is gonna stay in the budget, this is gonna come out. Maybe put a dollar value on it, so we say it's going to come out of the budget. Is it, is it gonna be an impactful into the budget? And then it stays into the budget? Uh, you pulled a hand up online as well.
I'd like to stay here and then go online, is there anyone else in the public that wants to talk here?
Sure, I can talk for a second, I'm, I'm Stu Lindberg, I'm a product of this little elementary school, home of my daughters and. I served on the school board here a few years back and I, you know, while I was on the board, I did a cost-benefit analysis of. This whole thing of consolidation and centralization, there's no economic history in, in the entire world that proves that. You know, consolidating anything actually saves money. Um, I mean, I, I, I don't have the paperwork or the numbers in front of me, uh, but, but what, what has happened by, uh. You know, things like Act forty-six, which didn't create any equity and didn't save anybody a single dime. Uh, we've ended up in, and this has been going on for years, and what they call a doom loop. And it, it's like this whole rinse, wash and repeat thing where as tax property taxes go up, we lose student enrollment. And those people that are leaving are young, working-class people who create jobs and support jobs and create revenue for. Uh, for schools and uh. There, there has to be a better way to do this, uh, you know, which, you know, I, I always say we can go, or is it Back to the Future? I don't know if that's appropriate, but uh, you know, we uh, in this state, you know, when, when I grew up here, we had local control of our schools. And uh, frankly, it worked, I mean, we built a great state and built a great nation and uh. Things were work, working out pretty well for us and, of course, a lot of that changed in ninety-seven when we lost our financial, uh, control over our budgets and, and uh. Every, you know, the state bureaucracy just got bigger and bigger and uh, more expensive and, you know, at the local level as a taxpayer, what I feel is. I've lost my voice, like I have no say in it, I have to pay up and I have to shut up. Which uh, is exactly what they, the, the chair of the House Ways and Means Committee up there in Montpelier said is. After three, the new, this, we have this new legislation where the taxpayers no longer get a, get a, a vote. Uh, after three times, three cuts, three, three strikes and you're out, I don't ask anybody here to, uh, you know. Make changes right in this meeting, but the, the next time you go to the polls, it, it might be prudent to think about changing how you vote. Uh, in order to make a change in how we finance our education and how we educate our children. Now, and thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stu.
Is online.
Yeah, Martha Mott Cavendish, I want to say you're in a really difficult position and you're all doing a really great job working on doing what you can to satisfy the voters, our pocketbooks, as well as the students. And I went to a board meeting last summer and I see a huge improvement in this board and how you're all working together. And I really appreciate seeing that. Gives me hope.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I wonder if we could circle back to the central office in the T R S U budget. I'm curious about the position, the many positions, and the history of growth in the central office. And, you know, if we're nitpicking about, you know, part-time positions in the high school fulfilling critical roles that really directly benefit the students, why are we not looking more granularly at the positions in the central office? So I'm just curious, like, probably won't be able to answer this, but like, over the last five years, how have salaries grown? How many positions have been added? That sort of growth, that is not necessarily easy for us to understand.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll speak. Hi, everyone. Angela Cartier. My daughter goes to Cavendish and I live on 21th Street. I just have a few things to say. I might be preaching to the choir, but I feel like there's principals here who have degrees and educational experience. I mean, the amount of years, probably if you put the three, and I know there's another principal not here together. And there's a lot, is the Lugo principal here?
Lugo's not.
Okay. Oh, isn't part of this. Okay, that's right. There's just a lot of experience and a lot of expertise, and I just, you hire these people, you put them in these roles. I think that there should be enough confidence that they know what they're doing. And I wish that I could just see more trust in the people that we put in those positions to, no one's like creating a position in a school just because they feel like wasting money. And as far as central office, when Lauren listed off all the people that work there, I can speak from experience, I don't think it's a lot of people. It doesn't sound like it's like exploding with cute people who send paychecks and people who write accounts payable. There's not, like, a ton of people who work at central office. So when you say trim the fat, I read that too. It's like, I came here to hear, what would you trim from central office? And I, I don't know what you would, because it already seems like it's running pretty thin. And I just feel like as a society, if we're going to dump money into anything, wouldn't it be the future? And all of these kids who are going to be taking care of us when we're old? I don't know, it just seems like the children are the future, not to sound like stereotypical, but like, give them everything, let them be successful. The amount of challenges that kids come to school with every day is so tremendous. It's so huge. And unless you live it and you work in it and you work with kids every day, you can't possibly understand the load that they come with. And I just, I just feel like we should just be pouring money in. I tell my husband, when you ever vote for school, you just vote yes. Just always vote yes. And I'm probably preaching to the choir and I'm an educator too, so I think if we're going to dump our money into anything, it should be our kids. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we have someone online, Martens?
Should be able to move you.
Yep, can you hear me? I was an educator at Chester and Dover Elementary School for 40 years, retired six years ago. And I guess my view is a little bit different than from the one who just spoke. One of my joys in teaching was to teach those kids that, whose parents loved them dearly, but those kids maybe came from families that were struggling economically. And I found over my years of teaching that it wasn't so much pouring money into those kids as it was pouring time, pouring love, pouring, just, I understand, I'm here for you. And one of my concerns is when the budgets seem to be increasing more than when I was teaching, is that those are the families that this hurts the most. They don't have extra money. They are, some of them borrowing to pay their monthly bills every month. And, you know, it's not that they don't want a good education for their kids, it's not that they don't want all this, this nice stuff. But they just simply don't have the money. And, you know, Vermont is filled with people who are living on fixed incomes. They also are, they are, most of them really supportive of schools and education. But you just have so much money a month, and that's it. And so I don't know the best places to cut, but I think it is important to really keep in mind that, you know, who's hurt the most? And to try to, to do what you can to minimize that for families, some of whom who end up leaving, just can't afford to live in this area or in Vermont anymore. And then what happens is your schools shrink, you have an even smaller tax base, and it's like this downhill spiral that doesn't end. So I appreciate how thoughtful you're being, and I know it's not easy. But there's a lot to think about. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
So Wendy McNaughton, and I'm going to speak from two perspectives. One is that I have a kid who goes to this building. From that point of view, my particular push is that you don't cut the nurse, you don't cut the art, and you don't cut the first and second grade position that's coming there. My other perspective is just as an educator in a high school, you don't cut the in-house position, you don't cut the Spanish. Then my reason, so I give you my direct feedback, but my reason is that really we end up in the opposite cycle. If we don't have a school that families want to come to, families won't come here. And I will not have any living neighbors on my street here across the street from the school any longer. They will all be Airbnb and they won't fund the tax base. And then we will not have what we need to pay our taxes. And so I think we invest more money into our school to lower all of our taxes because it'll put more people here rather than that downward funding cycle. And I would just also recommend to the board that you keep trying to reiterate to people the complicated tax scheme and law that's coming down from the state right now. That means that people really do have the impression that their taxes are higher than it actually will be impacted. And I'm not the person to clarify that, but whoever understands it better than I do. If I don't understand it, it means most people in town don't too. To keep explaining that to people, I don't know how or where, but the impact of what we're paying for our education tax is not as dramatic as people believe it is. And that it's going to get worse if we don't keep those things that draw positions and people to our town. And if we end up doing part-time positions, it's not just an effect of how much time students will have with those people. That's an effect of we will not be able to hire the people we want to for those positions. We will end up losing them fully, if not in actual budget line, but in the quality of the person that you can get there when you're not able to offer a full-time position. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have some, two people online, so Deb Walker.
Hi, I'm Deb Walker. I'm from Chester. I actually have children in both Chester and Cavendish Elementary School. I have just a couple of things to say, I'll try and make it quick. Number one, 27 kids is way too much for, you know, not an official week break. You're going to have to do that one-two in Cavendish, I feel. Second, is that ISS is exceptionally important. I do happen to have children with special needs. They do frequent ISS. They have gone from every day to once or twice every couple of months because of the consistency. I think that's vital. And another point is that, like the saying, that you should allow as much exploratory for these kids as young as possible. As you hire Spanish teacher, I think they should be allowed to check out everything that they, yeah.
We can't understand you.
Okay.
Your connection or if you're on speakerphone.
Sounds weird.
And that's going to be. Sorry.
Maybe you should put it in the chat.
Deb, the quality of your audio is making it hard for us to understand all of the words you're saying. You were asking whether you were on speakerphone possibly or something like that? Want to give you a chance to share what you want to share. Yes, you can certainly put it in chat.
Awesome.
Great. All right. We have Wayne speak while she's typing.
All right. If you put it into chat, Deb, I will read that in a moment, and I think, Wayne, we're going to go to you now.
Actually, can you hear me?
We can.
We can.
Awesome. I want to start by saying, you know, it would be very arrogant of me to assume that I know all the struggles that folks are going through in the district. Typically, when I'm watching meetings, I kind of take notes on my thoughts at the time. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about what those thoughts are and just recognize that they may well change as I get to know the district a little bit better and the people a little bit better. I think I'd start by saying, you know, we really do need to acknowledge the burden on taxpayers and that that burden is real and visceral to them. Further, that the state of Vermont needs to find a much better way of funding education. And that said, you're finding yourselves, and we're finding ourselves in a pretty difficult position, which is providing the services needed and demanded by the community on behalf of the students, while at the same time trying to cut the resources we need to accomplish that mission. It's not a comfortable position, and we're going to need the community's help and support to find a way out of this. We can't fix the system that the state has created, and we can't provide the services needed by the students and the resources required by the staff to do the job desired by the community without a confirmed budget. So then the question which you're wrestling with is how do we get there? And I think we start by realizing that the district has done a really good job managing the expenses that are within its control, especially after the conversation on Friday with Lauren. The largest change, and I think this is important for the community to understand this year, was due to the dramatic increase in property values and a resetting of the tax base caused by the new education funding legislation. Right? When property values go up, the state expects us to pay taxes on that increase. And when the legislation changes how education is funded, for better or worse, we're bound to those changes. These things are not within the district's control. And I would argue that voting down a school budget to protest that increase is understandable. It's just not effective because the communication isn't directed at the ears that need to hear it, which are our legislators in the state. What do we do? Cutting staff destroys morale and harms students. Cutting resources limits the ability of the staff to do what we require of them. And both are things that are going to reduce our ability to provide a quality education. If the community comes together to pass this budget, our next step, which is realistic, is that beginning at the end of the September, we need to discuss and develop a long-term plan to keep the district whole while providing services at a cost the community can bear. I have to warn folks, however, that true solutions are there, but they're limited. And if we discuss them, it will touch on the community's values and beliefs when it comes to community schools. The reality is that the state is going to have to require these conversations of every district in the near future if it's going to find a way to make school funding realistic and palatable. Lastly, right now, I would ask the community to make the difficult choice of not forcing the district to make catastrophic reductions that will ultimately end up making folks unhappy with the decrease in services they're going to experience. Lauren and the principals have done exceptional work creating a reasonable budget. I would ask you to support their efforts. I would also ask you to support the staff by minimizing further cuts and giving us a chance to connect in the fall to develop a long-term funding plan that's sustainable and which will provide for a quality education at a cost the community would bear. And kind of my last thought here in terms of the discussion that you're having is I would ask, you know, what is your mission for the district and the school? What are your goals for students in the district? And I would say that those things should be the driver for the budget decisions that I do not envy you that you're having to make right now. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Deb put her comments into chat. So I will read those, if that is okay.
Yeah.
So this is from Deb Walker. I have kids in Cavendish and Chester. I think ISS is extremely important and consistency is a huge value. I have kids that do use that service, and due to the consistency, they've gone from every day to the rare occasion. Another thing, that is too many half, too many one-two kids for one teacher. Cavendish needs to hire someone for that position for safety, but also for the kids, so that they can get a valuable education. They might not get it if the class is too big. I also feel you should allow kids to get as much exploratory experience as possible. Hire a new Spanish teacher to give them that opportunity to help them move forwards. And lastly, make the adults work harder, not the kids. I hate to say it, but there are always more support for office staff than is absolutely necessary. It might not feel like it, it might be hard, but it's worth it. And I think this is probably the toughest part of your jobs. I appreciate all of your efforts, but I'm also low-income, and I wouldn't say keep anything if I didn't feel it was worth it.
I'd say perhaps you put that in the chat, because I heard the exact opposite from the muffled, so, oh, great.
I'm Forrest from Cavendish. I would like an opportunity to hear the rest of what April's saying, because he had some good stuff.
We're going to be asking you, please.
Thank you.
We're happy to hear it. He was talking about things, I think, in regards to the restructuring. Is that, you were talking about closing GM and that sort of thing?
If I can, thank you, Cory. I'm talking about budget. I know, I got two minutes, so I want to talk quickly. I'm talking about budget and cutting budget and reducing costs. And if you're literally burning money in order to keep the building, that would be a place to save some money. If you're paying teachers who don't have any students in their classes, I know you cut that position out, but those are places that are reduction of cost. And so I think that's a legitimate thing that hasn't been, you know, proposed and talked about is, well, maybe this is the way that we go. Yes, it definitely is connected to the restructuring conversation, but it is also a budget conversation. Because I know an awful lot of people who do not send their kids to GM because, for all sorts of reasons. And you have much better numbers than I do, but somewhere around 20%, 25% of kids who could go to GM go someplace else. I know the number is much higher among former school board members, the people who have seen this process most high. You know, a lot of us. Anyway. The other thing is, is that if you're talking about, well, one of the things we could cut is transportation, you know, I think that's a legitimate cut to make, particularly at the high school level where people have, you know, can have cars. But then that eliminates any reason to have a public high school in terms of equity, because if they have, if parents have to get their kids to GM, they could just as well get their kids to some other school that they could choose, like Ludlow does. There were a lot of parents who came out for the school choice night in Ludlow. The other thing I will say about the three strikes and you're out, the budget thing, I think if you put forward three budgets that fail, the leadership of the board should change. Because the leadership of the board has failed. With that, I yield back the balance of Cory's time.
Deb Walker put her hand up again. I don't know whether she had something else wanted to add.
Yeah, scrap those marks, Mike, add.
Deb, was there something else? No, it's gone now. You have somebody else online here, Zach? Lisa?
Yep, sorry, I was just waiting for the unmute to let me unmute. Yes, I'm Zach McNaughton. I live right here in Proctorsville, Cavendish. I just wanted to reiterate, a couple of people brought up the issue with the grade one and two teacher situation in that class size. But what I haven't heard anybody say And but what I haven't heard anybody say yet, so. There are, first graders are non-readers, and second graders, for the most part, are readers. When you have that many kids combined into one classroom, two grade levels of non-readers and readers. I just don't see how you can teach non-readers to read while you teach readers. To move on to the next level of reading. And you put twenty-seven kids in the same room in that scenario. And reading is such a fundamental skill for what is gonna affect everything that follows in a child's education and in their life. And if you set them up to fail by understaffing. That classroom during that grade one-two experience, I mean, you are really setting up the rest of their entire lives. For a, a less of potential to become contributing citizens and be able to pay to the tax base. So I just really would like to encourage you. Um, to, to A reconsider splitting, combining levels, grade one and two together. I, me personally, I just, um, you know. I have the utmost respect for the teacher who teaches that. I don't know how you do it, teaching non-readers and readers at the same time. But twenty-seven elementary school kid- kids, I, I mean, I have. Next year, I'll have two elementary school kids living in my own house, and I can barely handle that. Twenty-seven in a room. That just seems absurd to me with only one instructor. There should be three instructors of that size, but. Um, so that was the main point I wanna make, and also the nurse. Um, my kid is a frequent flyer at the nurse. Uh, the nurse is a very, very important thing to have all day, just like, um, Abe mentioned. Kids won't schedule their injuries and ailments for the time that the nurse is in the building. Uh, that it, it happens when it happens, and you really need that person there all the time. And, uh, thank you for allowing the public comments, and I know you're in a tough spot, and good luck.
Thank you.
If, if I could just, uh, clear up a couple of things. One is, there will be a full-time nurse in all three of our buildings. No one has proposed for next year, cutting. Any of our full-time nurses. We have a full-time nurse at Cavendish, a full-time nurse at Chester Andover, a full-time nurse at Green Mountain. The thought that we were discussing is there is an additional part-time person. Who has been based primarily at Chester Andover and also has provided some support at Green Mountain. But I keep hearing people talk about you need to have a nurse in the building. All three of our buildings will have a full-time nurse in the building. And nobody, nobody has proposed that. If you talk about what's going to, the possibility of this failing. You could talk about it next time, but nobody at the moment has proposed doing away with any. Uh, in terms of, of a full-time nurse. The other thing is talking about the, uh, grade one-two teacher. We, you all just voted to keep that position, so we appreciate everybody's, um, support for keeping that position. Doesn't sound like it's a debate you have to continue to have.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the public that wants to speak?
How taking something out this year and putting it back next year affects tax rates?
So the, the statement that, uh, we're proposing, given the current conditions. That you remove something from the planned budget for next year. It is always the case that the following year, you can decide to put it back in again. Decide not to put it back in again. You can decide next year to put in things we haven't even thought. That in terms of how it affects tax rates is, if you put more things in, then your tax rate goes up. On the other hand, under the current, I keep hearing about all of the difficulty that people are having. Under the current funding formula, the budget that was proposed on April twenty-third reduced everybody's base tax rate. Nobody's base tax rate was going up because of that budget. It reduced everybody's taxes. What, putting your taxes up is the CLA, is the yield, your local education budget in March, well, in March it was leveled. In April, it was a reduction. This one, depending on where you land with it. Really, no matter where you land with it, even if you put it forwards, exactly the same on this April twenty-third, would still be a reduction in your base tax. Does that answer?
My understanding had to do with expenses from this year not affecting the base tax rate going into next year unless you add next year. So if you take away this year, you go into next year and, uh, you don't have that sort of harm unless you go up.
Yeah, if, if we keep cutting things so that we keep lowering our base tax rate. Next year, you will have the base tax rate that is established here, and you put other things in, it will raise your tax rate.
Any other comments, questions? Not online?
I, I, I just wanna make two comments. The first one being that the budget that we put forth. Was the budget that was recommended by the administration and agreed upon by all of us, and that budget was voted down. The second budget was the best we could do to keep as many people happy as possible. And that was voted down. The thing that upset me the most, and I'm trying not to cry because it's just. Is how few people voted, and that makes me sick. To be honest, we, we, we need to educate our kids. And that's why we spend so much of our time trying to make this work. And the fact that people can't even come out and vote to support our children is heartbreaking.
Now, I think we've had sufficient discussion. Do you still want to go line by line, or, or is the, is the board want to readdress putting forth? Previous budget?
I, I.
Seventeen million?
We go line by line, just as a, it could even be a very quick, brief line. We get a feel for whether we're like half and half or.
And, and highlighting what we're going to put back in. Okay, starting at the top. Cutting the ISS position. In favor, and these are not official votes, this is polling, in favor of cutting the ISS position? Scott, were you able to answer?
Are you saying, I didn't hear you, you cut in and out a little bit. Are you saying to remove the ISS?
No. Put it back in.
Back in, I'm, I'm against putting it back in.
Alright.
So we are roughly ten to one on that? Am I reading that correct?
Okay, so I'm gonna highlight that.
A majority vote.
Well, that wasn't an actual vote.
Um, the next one that was proposed when we went through first time was putting back in, uh, so I wanna word this right. Who's in favor of putting back in the Spanish teacher?
I am.
Scott?
No.
The position.
The position.
Scott, you guys did not raise your hands, or you're in favor of?
We're keeping it out as, as it is.
So three to keep it out? Is that what I'm picking it up?
I have enough to keep it in. I don't know.
I, I thought you were asking for hands for people who wanted to put it back in.
So, and there were three people who abstained, or had abstained, did not vote. So that one goes back in by majority. Um, the, I'm gonna combine these, cause they kinda go together, steam coordinator and steam supplies. Putting it back in, who's in favor of that?
No.
So that will stay out. Um, the reducing the CTS art position, point four to point three, who wants to put it back to point four? Four. Five, so majority stays out. Let's see, cutting the, uh, Cavendish building sub. Who wants to put it back in? We, that was already. Yeah, that was already agreed to.
It's a nurse position in staying out.
The only ones that are in question are, are, we're talking about.
So.
When you say staying up, you mean cut or not?
Cut.
Cut.
Cut. So, cutting the sub is the one we're talking about. Who is in favor of putting it back in? Capital reserve, who is in favor of increasing it by a hundred thousand? So the, 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 it's, the reduction is what's proposed. I'm asking if people want it back in, a hundred thousand to be put back in.
I think it needs to be.
So it's a majority to say. We can have discussion after, I'm just trying to. Um, we'll address the tier issue assessment. That's not something we can do. So I think that's the ones that we were, okay. So basically.
So somebody asked about numbers, if it's alright.
That's fine.
So we're putting, the proposal that we have now is putting back in the in-school suspension position, that's forty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-five. The Spanish position will put back in sixty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight. Putting back in the Chester Andover building sub will put back in thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven. And that's.
What was the? What was the, uh, what was the group opinion on the CTS art position?
So, and somebody did, uh, done the math, that, that is putting back in an additional roughly a hundred and fifty? Doing math in my head. Um, one forty-seven, five fifty, pretty good.
One hundred thousand dollar reduction. Lauren, was that number?
Um, it will put back in a hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and forty dollars, which. Which reduces our budget, well, the revised proposed budget with that would wind up at. Still under seventeen.
Yeah, sixteen, four, twenty-eight, ninety-three, seven, Sherland.
Yeah.
And they added one forty-seven.
Yeah, somewhere around sixteen, seventeen.
Well, we need, we need a number.
Sixteen, it would be sixteen million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven. Which is an increase over the. Of four point six seven rather than the three point seven.
Okay, as a board, is that a budget that we are proposing to put forth to the voters?
To Roland's point, we should probably.
That's why I'm asking.
Alright, I agree. Rick agrees.
I agree.
I agree.
Scott, did you hear the number?
I did not.
It would be, sorry, um, sixteen million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven. That is a four point six seven percentage increase over last year.
So we're voting to agree that on everything?
No, what we are, what we are cutting.
No, 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 I'm saying what, we're trying to, Adrian, you're trying to say as a, as a board, we need to agree.
Scott, the lead is what's getting put back in the budget by majority. Um, decision, not vote. Um, and with those re-ditions. The budget of sixteen million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars would be the budget we would put forth to the voters. Approximately. Are, is, is that a budget that you're comfortable with? More comfortable with?
I'm not comfortable with, nope.
Okay. Alright. Okay, sorry, Steve.
I'm sorry, um, I'm not comfortable with it either. I think if we're gonna put these people back in, we need to cut capital reserve. I'm not comfortable with it either. I think if we're gonna add these people back in, and I think that's essential, we need to cut the capital reserve for rainy day fund. Cutting it more.
Is that, is that a vote that?
By the amount that, that, uh, we're funding.
One fifty.
One forty-seven, what was it, five forty?
Great, so that would be our capital reserve, uh, just so we have a number.
Uh, well, that would be four hundred thousand minus one hundred and fifty-seven, five forty, which would be two hundred and forty.
Before, before we vote on that, could we have Todd give us his opinion of that?
Um, I'm just here, I want to hear if we could afford then the, uh, fire marshals requirements. What we need to do to keep the school open in order to.
So let me just ask this for the board real quick. Is this, I'm gonna do the kind of majority poll. Is this something that the board would even want to consider as a majority? Do we want to even talk about this, or is this something the board is thinking is important to keep our capital reserves intact? So, have this discussion.
Alexander will just say that I feel that capital reserve needs to be kept for emergencies, other items. There's a lot of different infrastructure that are in every one of the buildings.
Okay, alright, so Todd, can you speak to that?
I, I just wanted to say that I agree with, um, Alexander on that. Um, that we definitely need to keep capital in for any rainy days. I mean, a dishwasher goes. Any extra, that means that they're gonna come after the taxpayers for bonds. We don't want bonds.
Okay, so right now, we're on, really working hard on our bid documents for the fire marshal services report. Um, I wouldn't begin to tell you where that's gonna come in, but it's gonna be pricey. I don't know what it is, but it's gonna take a cut into our capital improvement funds. Uh, we've used some emergent, not emergency funds, um, safety grant money from VISBIT to take care of some of this. We are using every avenue that we can. This board, when it reconfigured, decided that. We would not have a capital improvement fund for years when I first started, was for emergencies. That I came before the board and said, we have four doors that are falling apart and we can't deal with that anymore. The board always said, yes, we'll take the money out of capital improvement. When the bond failed, this board decided we're gonna start a capital improvement fund. To start addressing infrastructure problems in our three buildings. Now, and I understand the situation that we're in and with our taxes and with the hard position that the boards in and taxpayers. That it's an easy place to take it out, but we're going backwards. We're going back to where we were. It's gonna be a fund where it's only for emergencies, and when there's only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it. I understand that sounds like a lot of money, but after the fire marshal service report is, comes through and we ask for the money. And it has to be done, there won't be, there won't be much left. If there's an emergency, like Scott just said. We're gonna, then we're gonna be tied to either getting a loan or talking about going to bond. And I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen, but our buildings aren't getting any newer, so, I mean, Kate?
Um, when you say pricey, can you give me an estimate, like three thousand is pricey? Hundred and fifty thousand is pricey, so we have no clue how much that's gonna be.
I wouldn't dare guess, I just wouldn't. I don't, I don't know what it's gonna be. It's gonna go out for bid, and I think it'd be unfair for me to say that for any contractor to build the. To bid on that as well, to say that I had said that it was gonna be somewhere in this price range.
I was just gonna add for a boiler, uh, four million BT boiler, could be one fifty at Okemo. In so. That's just going rate.
Alright. My thoughts on this, I mean, cutting a hundred thousand, based on everything that Todd reported out to us, age and the. End of life estimates for a lot of our infrastructure. even cutting a hundred thousand, like I, I agree with Scott, like I'm very hesitant to do that, but at the same time, I recognize we have to make cuts, and that's, you know, the biggest chunk of this, of these proposed cuts are one of the biggest chunks, um. Reducing that further to me feels like we're really flirting with disaster, and I'm not comfortable cutting any more than proposed hundred thousand here.
Alright, so does the board, as a majority, want to entertain cutting the capital reserve further? Not a vote, do we want to entertain this? First of all.
I don't.
So by majority, we will not entertain cutting it further. Okay, alright, so back to what we were talking about. Is there any more discussion about number to budget proposals, or any issue? Um.
Is the hundred and twenty-three thousand in that number? The, uh, TRSU assessment?
That is a redone. They did not put it back in.
They didn't put it back in.
No. But it's still out.
Okay, alright, so what I'm asking now is if there is a motion to put forth the budget of sixteen million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. There is not, we'll continue talking.
I would move to put forth the budget at sixteen million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven.
Alexander, second.
Sorry, who's the second?
Alexander.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just gonna go ahead and ask, we'll call though. Okay. Um, alright, Rick Alexander.
Yes.
Jeff Hans.
Yes.
Scott Kendall.
No.
Kate Lampere.
Yes.
Casey Leahy.
Yes.
Katie Murphy.
Yes.
Steve Prani.
No.
Lois Perlo.
Yes.
Lisa Saunders.
Yes.
Tuckerman.
Yes.
So I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yes, and one, two, no. So the next proposal is the sixteen million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars that will be put forth to the voters.
I am, we will then need to schedule, we'll need to talk about the timing, you need an additional meeting after the TRSU finalizes their budget, so that we have the exact number that will go forwards. And we have to decide before we have the language to put in that warning, what the date of the next vote will be. We will have to talk about that with Ludlow, Manpali, as well as with you. But to start that conversation, um, we would propose doing this, uh, either the last week of May or the first week in June. You're trying to, if we can get it passed, to have it happen so that it is in place without the thirty-day time period to be reconsidered before the new fiscal year starts. The trouble with the last week of May is that it is a Memorial Day week. We usually try to do things on Tuesday, but that Tuesday is still a stay off for students and is an in-service day for our staff. Discussion among administration was that while we like to aim for Tuesday, the fact is, it's a random day as far as most people are concerned. They're not waking up on Tuesday going, is today a day I go vote? And, and, and so our suggestion would be, my first suggestion would be May twenty-ninth, which is the Wednesday after Memorial Day, I think I said Labor Day. It would be the Wednesday after Memorial Day. And, and if that feels too soon, the latest I would propose doing this would be the following Tuesday, which would be June fourth. And we'll have to put it in front of Ludlow as well, not that you have to agree on the same date, but it is helpful to have everybody going forwards on the same one. We have enough people who don't know when it's happening. When we're trying to advertise for everybody, if we're going forward with two different dates, I think we will just confuse the entire planning. So that's where I, that's our proposal, but.
Uh, my preference would be Tuesday. I, I don't think we should underestimate voting behavior, and we vote our creatures of habit, and we vote on Tuesdays. And I think I worry about it impacting, uh, turnout.
Do you wanna do the twenty-eighth or the fourth?
I think we should do the fourth.
Do we also have the option of having some sort of survey that goes along with the vote to pass?
Absolutely, James. Uh, we, well, and, and I, 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 again, you're gonna wanna talk about exactly what it says, what you can and can't say. But I, I, I've previously been involved with places that, uh, put on their budget votes, if you voted no, and it's much less complicated than this, but if you voted no, did you vote no because the budget was too high? Check a box, because the budget was too low, check a box. And you get, you get that kind of information. If you want to put forward something like this, there is a much lengthier conversation among all of you about what you want to say and why you want to say it, understanding that I, I, I will also, from the district position, say, if you ask people who don't understand how a school system works, whether they want to cut district administration, the answer every time is yes.
Okay, um.
I just was curious about an alternative strategy, which would just be surveying people, as opposed to going through the, the, uh, I love the idea of, of getting it this way, and that's a lot of effort, and maybe we just do a survey too.
Yep. I, I, I think that is a good idea as well, but I could heartily recommend adding to the one, one item that people are going to, if you voted no, too high, too low.
Are you talking about a survey prior to, or an email, or are you talking about?
Yeah, I was just talking about as an alternative to a vote, but I'm, it's, I think it's a great strategy to have people coming in and, and voting.
Okay, so we have to, prior to the vote, that we have to have another meeting? So when, when do we want to have that?
So part of the question about that is that your, your warning has to have, y- y- your warning can happen at any point. Your budget vote has to happen at least seven days after, so you could issue your warning tomorrow and vote on June fourth. You have to have an informational meeting. The informational meeting has to happen no more than seven days before the vote, no fewer than five days. Usually we do, if it's a Tuesday vote, Green Mountain has their informational meeting on the Thursday before, Ludlow usually does their on, theirs the weekend. So you technically could wait to do that until May sixteenth. I don't think there would be a problem with it, except I do have some concern that you take in with amounts to a strong vote about it. And when we come forwards with a, do you actually support the warning, I think that's too many weeks between now and then. I think you should do it soon, so we would be looking at having a meeting for the sole purpose of approving the specific number, so after TRSU, and the warning date. And you can do that primarily on Zoom if you want to, it shouldn't be a matter of debate. Although the last time we said that, we still did three hours about it. We still did quite a bit of time about what was in the budget, but that's, a- and we don't have a lot of days available. So do you want to look at, while everybody is here, when you might want to schedule an additional meeting? Everybody's, a- and other than Scott who's online, your entire board is in the room, so.
The additional meeting for us.
For, for, so it should, it needs to be after Thursday when the TRSU is meeting.
Um, would anyone want to, to just, um, tag it on to the sixteenth, the regular school board meeting? If you don't wanna do that?
It's like.
Well, I just, I mean, like, I'm looking, I mean, just next week, we've got legislative committee, we've got, you know, um, some other like facilities, transportation, legis, I mean, committee meetings next week.
Could we tag down to one of those though, because since it's online and, and those are more hour-long, even the people who wouldn't be coming to those committee meetings, it'd be easier for me anyway than to wait till the sixteenth.
Alright, so outside the seventh and the ninth are those two meetings.
And I can't do the night.
Please, yeah, I'd like everyone to. Try to.
I can't do it.
So the seventh?
Seventh I can do.
Okay, so the facilities meeting is from six, well, they have them both from six to seven-thirty, so do you want to just have it immediately follow that, those two?
If you want all of your board members to come, and then you're having meetings, so don't involve all board members. Maybe you want to do the one that involves everybody further.
Yeah, works for that.
So. Five, five-thirty?
Yeah, I can make that work.
So you're speaking for a thirty-minute meeting on May seventh?
Alright, we're gonna be very efficient.
Yes.
So.
And then your, your meeting is happening entirely on Zoom, the other ones, do you want this one entirely on Zoom, or do you want the physical?
Zoom or location?
Okay with me.
I'll be on Zoom one way or the other, so.
Zoom preference?
I think Zoom. So that means that we will be giving you the thing to sign electronically?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so we will have the, the next meeting, um, seventh of May at five-thirty, and we're proposing the vote for June fourth, is everyone?
Is that the date you want?
Okay, so then our informational meeting would need to be the twenty-third, is that correct?
Um.
The third?
No, the thirtieth.
It would be, um, Thursday, the thirtieth, would be the information.
Correct.
Um, this.
Does everybody have those dates and times?
Yes.
Uh, yeah.
Everybody's got those dates and times?
Yes.
Seventh of March, thirty, thirtieth, June fourth.
Yes.
I would just recommend that we borrow a little Springfield strategy and share with the voters what will potentially be cut if we go down on a better track. Um, because I would like the voters to decide that that's what we're gonna do.
Right, agreed. Right, well, a- and i- i- if you do that, that needs to be what you are all actually agreeing is going to happen. Right, that you are saying that if this fails, then, a- and I, I, I would ask you whether you would start with, if this fails, are you putting back in, out for things you just put in, or are those things off the table now completely?
So Springfield, uh, is proposing that if the, if, you know, and they put out the exact same budget, um, and they're proposing that, uh, if, if the budget fails the third time, classes, athletics, and after-school activities would be cut because they are mostly costly in the projects.
Middle schools, alright, Adrian, I think middle school athletics.
Yeah.
Not high school.
I, I, the person that's sent all the information was then defining them. But just, I mean, so like, just as long as people are ready, because, you know, we're not, we're not even willing to talk about making some of the soccer cuts. So if we're gonna take that kind of stance, we have to come together as a group to make a much harder stance. And I hate to say hard, like, you know, we're, yeah.
The, these are, these are things that we talked about, uh, talking about cutting athletics, the curriculums, those are things that affect students.
Yep.
The reason that people talk about doing it this way though, is that you, you have to pass a budget. And as Lois was saying, I view our biggest problem not the number of people who want to vote no. I think our biggest problem is that if all of the people who voted yes in March had come back to vote yes for this lower budget, we would have passed it easy. But getting people, people who want to vote no feel very strongly about it. And they mobilize and motivate and talk to each other and they turn out. And people who support the school tend to do that in a quiet, maybe it'll get taken care of by. And we want people who really support their school to understand that you need to come and vote yes. Or this board that has made very clear that they don't want to cut anything that affects students, it's gonna wind up in a place where they have to in order to have a viable budget.
I guess my question is, how do we stimulate the public to come and support this budget?
The public. Yeah, the people that are showing up need to be vocal. You know, I, I.
And in your schools, your parents, these, these are the people who can help us.
But the proposal that you would have if this, i- if it, if, if it fails, is we'd be looking at cutting athletics, high school and middle school. We would be looking at cutting the rest of the co-curriculums. We'd be looking at cutting transportation, the transportation reserve, the seat, the building subs, and the, we have, uh, money in to deal with some rock that we're starting to see in this building here. And, and we don't want to pull the money out to deal with that, because we don't want it to get worse, and if you can't pass a budget, it doesn't matter. So, there was an additional seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars worth of possible cuts. We've already taken off the table about two hundred thousand of that in the open positions. We're gonna move forwards with those. I'm gonna take you at your word, we're gonna issue letters of intent for the people that we're recommending, and we will put those people in front of you on May sixteenth.
Is there any further discussion? Alright, um, so I was going to list off the next meeting as the restructuring meeting that's supposed to immediately follow this, but I'm going to tell you that I am, I am unwilling to say that.
Yeah.
Um, so, I, sorry.
I, I'm sorry, um, we're going to public comment again in a moment.
Yes.
Or, because somebody has.
Sorry, did I jump right over that? I should, yeah, we'll have a public comment in a minute. Um, so, but I do want a commitment as to when we're gonna have that meeting. For restructuring. For restructuring.
I can shift things around at the will of the board.
Right, well, you've already established that, uh, Thursday, it's nine, doesn't work for people. Uh, you can have your meeting, um, Monday the sixth, or Wednesday the eighth, but neither Cheryl nor I can be heading, because that's when Ludlow, Manpali has their.
I am not very confident next week. Uh, how about the, the week of, week twentieth?
At the moment, we do not have, been scheduled.
I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm, I'll be away from the twenty-first and on the twenty-third, so I could.
You do the beginning of the week.
I could do the one.
Twenty, twenty-one.
How about Wednesday, the twenty-second, is that one for everybody?
My girlfriend's here, it's not, I can't.
She doesn't wanna come to the restructuring?
I can ask, I can ask, yeah.
Is that a yes or a no for the twenty-second? But we can pick another day.
Say yes.
How about the twenty-first?
Twenty-first? Twenty-first?
Tuesday would work better for twenty-first.
Or I could catch it on Zoom.
Okay, twenty-first, May twenty-first.
We're gonna reschedule the restructuring.
Can we please, Adrian, can we please do it here, these people?
Yeah, that's fine, we'll have it here again.
Okay, this will be in six again?
Yes. And then, um, okay, so let's do the, the second round of public comment and then.
Alright, uh, you guys have the hotline?
Okay.
Uh, Frank, up to, Frank, up to, Frank?
Uh, good evening, thank you, board members and administrators, um, it's been fascinating to listen to you. Um, I know it's a difficult decision, the decisions that you're making, but this has been an ongoing issue in TRSU and before that GMUSD. Um, it's tough, it's never gonna be easy. Um, your balancing act is incredibly fine wire, um, and again, I applaud you for walking it. Um, it's not nice, yet, once you agree with this, I'm very excited to hear that the board is in agreement with these things, that we all need to sell this, uh, because at the end of the day, we, we need to remember, our kids did not cause this healthcare increase. Our kids did not cause the inflation because of a war in Ukraine, they had nothing to do with it. But by golly, they need to know where Ukraine is, and know where Gaza is, and any other, the present challenges that the world is facing, our kids need to be ready to face them. And I applaud all of you for reaching, uh, a, a point where we can come together and say like, let's support this. And please, for our communities, let's get behind this and let's move on to other important things. And I just wanted to be known that for my part, I am doing my part to reduce the budget because it's been an honor to work for you, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah, I brought up a good point, um, on the twenty-first, it's the pop sponsor to.
Oh.
Oh. Do the twenty-second, don't worry about it.
You, you don't. You won't have anybody show up.
So the twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, okay, so the twenty-second, that's CTES.
Thanks, Kim.
Okay, alright. Yeah, yeah. So, and then the next regular.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carol, I'm sorry.
You have more time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, so what you've done, I'll be fast. I'll say first, I'm not ever gonna vote down a school budget ever, it's, it's not what I'll do. But, but two quick things to mention is one, I'm concerned about the cut in the art position at CTES. I know that sounds tiny and trivial, but that's the point. It's saving like eight thousand four hundred and forty-four or something dollars. And the impact of that is not just the time the students won't have with that art teacher, but the likelihood of us to be able to continue to have a good art teacher when it is a lower part-time position. And that's just such a small amount of money for that impact, that that's unfortunate in this budget. Um, and then the second piece, especially if this one doesn't get voted down, I'm not trying to curse us. Can we look outside of what is being proposed by administrators for cuts? I don't have the answer. I don't know what it is. People had some ideas proposed that I don't know what the impact would be or not. I don't know what it would mean to close the high school. I don't know what other options there are, but I don't know what this process is gonna be like moving forward if this gets voted down. But I'm wondering, what is the avenue to consider things that aren't for vote?
Building Restructuring Committee is a good place to come to vote.
Amber? Yes, Amber?
Um, to Lois's point, I am also very disheartened by the fact that there were only five hundred and sixty voters that came out in April. Again, tell you that all four voters in my household did vote. Um, and two of the three who actually are here all the time voiced that they would have had no idea that there was a vote had I not told them that there was a vote.
I would agree.
So this board needs to do a better job of publicizing that. Hit Facebook. You guys all know people who are on the Rotary, who are on the Lions Club. It, those all have their Facebook pages. The Chester, uh, group has a Facebook page. The Preacher Cavernous has a Facebook page. Hit those people who are the administrators of those Facebook pages. Nearly ninety percent of people have Facebook or their people in their families do. You need to get it out there and publicize it because once again, come May whatever, June fourth, all four voters in my household will vote because I will tell them that it's time to vote, that they need to get out there and vote. But if it turns out that only three hundred and some odd people go out to vote in, in June, that's on you.
I would second what she said. I was gonna say that before as well. I wouldn't know, thank you, Jen, for always putting it out.
I want someone to, um, suggest that I think the board has to do some PR about this, as if to say, what happens if you turn down this budget? Some people just like to say no. And it's like, what happens? And I think Lauren was saying, we may have to cut this, this, this and this. So I think people have to be educated on what they're gonna miss out on. Along with everything else that we can say.
Yeah, and what, what you said earlier about how this budget all works, how the numbers work. I don't know what you're talking about when you're saying one dollar for this and one dollar and twenty-five cents for that. I have no idea.
I suggest that people show up at the informational meeting because all of that is discussed there. And then we, we're putting together a social media committee or, or work group that will also be taking social media by storm. Um, so hopefully we can get that done, you know, anything else.
Yep.
I can't see.
So, uh, just to build up the PR piece of it. Um, I know, you know, we've posted a ton of it, you know, in this little pocket called Facebook. There's a large chunk of our voters who do show up, who are not part of Facebook. You have to, as a board, get outside the box. Um, I've been here at this little school my entire career, love this school. Um, only one other time I can recall is being in this position and looking at Peggy. Um, and it took the board creating a flyer, an informational piece that was stuffed in every person's mailbox. The US mail system, if you really wanna hit all your voters, is really where you wanna educate them from. Social media, as we saw with the first vote that went down, there were a couple key people who were loud across, and they did, they hit every major Facebook page with false information, and that's all it took. So if the board puts their heads together and puts a piece of paper in people's hands that is accurate, the information, what does it mean? Why am I seeing a double-digit increase? What does that mean? That's gonna carry more weight than all the social media, blah, 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 I think.
And everybody reads the bermatrim. Get the bermatrim. We have Roddy, Dick and Jane, so everybody can understand it. I don't know.
Young people don't usually read.
The other ones are voting. I don't know how many. Well, however you feel, that's one way of feeling.
Okay, I mean, I also think just additional feedback is that tonight was advertised as the restructuring meeting. I took, I left work early. It wasn't changed. I can't come to the next meeting, so I'm frustrated about that. I have a six, a four and a one-year-old. I want to be part of this process. And so the fact that our, our voices can't be heard in a meaningful way is really frustrating. It does not make me enthusiastic about being involved. So I think that's important for you all. Also thinking about your towns. When I drop off my kiddos at school, I can't stop and vote first. I have to go back in order to vote. So that's an important piece too, thinking about what time can we drop off in school, but what time can we vote? That's an important thing to work with your actual town administrators on. So there's an actual flow of that information. I hear that the information sessions are great. That's a lot of time. So put that information up, not just in the, in the information session. Make it accessible in other ways. Record it, publicize it, make it accessible so that you don't have to dig through the TRSU website fifteen different clicks in order to get that information. That is profoundly frustrating and it means that people will not show up. They will not be enthusiastic and they will vote down now every single time because they don't understand it.
Any other comments? Julie Tracy from Handover?
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hmm.
Questions? Okay, our, uh, next regular jam meeting will be May sixteenth at Jimmy Wood's best at six o'clock. From motion concerns.
So. So.
Sure. On favor?
Aye.
Our adjourned.
Thank you.